I'd like to call this March 14th, 2024 Board of Education Work Session to Order. Mr. Onagostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell? Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stochek?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausel?
Here.
All present.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we revisit our strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan. Some of those values and beliefs and hopes are represented by our community today. We have four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. And all the decisions we make are based on those priorities. I'm excited to turn it over to Student Achievement, Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Always an exciting time when we can recognize our outstanding students and staff. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stochek and Ms. Kilbane for OSBA Student Achievement
I think, is Bill doing this one?
Yes.
Yes, Bill is doing this one.
We're going to hand it over to Bill.
This is for a student of the quarter, the second quarter at Polaris Career Center, Gavin Way.
Way.
Way. Oh, I did say right. Is Gavin here?
Yep.
Come on up, Gavin. You can listen, please. Gavin is in pre-engineering.
So just before I talk about Gavin for a second, I want to clarify, Strongsville, I'm sorry, Polaris has students of the quarter at their facility, and then they have students of the quarter for the satellite. Gavin is a satellite program. He attends Polaris classes at our school. So Gavin started off in automation robotics in eighth grade. And if, the way our engineering program works, it's a four-year program, which you may stick in for the four years. Starts with intro to engineering, digital electronics, second year, principles of engineering, third year, and engineering design and development in your fourth year. I mentioned the entire programs. Gavin's been in the honors level for all three up to this point. He has, since eighth grade in all of those courses, he has never gotten below a 97% in any of those classes. His GPA currently cumulative is a 4.38. He is also involved, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, he did, he has done track. But when you talk about the amazing amount of clubs that our school offers, Gavin is in Mustang Life, hold on, I'm getting old, Student Council Executive, he's in my principal leadership group, he's in Leukemia, the LLS Society, he's a project lead the way ambassador, meaning he is a student leader for Polaris in our school, he is in the National Honor Society, and he's also in the Mu Alpha Theta, which is the math honor society. So when I say he's a well-rounded young man, clearly you can see that he is. He represents everything at Strongsville High School that goes well in his right. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep. Congratulations. Come on, get a picture. Why don't Mom and Dad, why don't come and get a picture with him?
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, Gavin.
Congratulations again to Gavin on that great accomplishment. And next up, I'm going to ask our Athletic Director, Mr. Denny Ziegler, to come up to announce and share another great accomplishment within the program.
Thank you guys very much. It's always an honor to stand here and to recognize teams that have had outstanding years, seasons. This group brought home Strongsville's first ever state title in dance. So I will turn it over to Coach Grimm to talk about the dance team.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Grimm. I'm a speech-language pathologist here in the district, and I'm also the coach of the Strongsville High School Dance Team. This team is incredibly impressive. It's made up of 20 very talented, skilled, and hard-working athletes. They, this year, competed at the state championship for Ohio for dance. They qualified for states in all four categories entered: lyrical, jazz, hip-hop, and palm. And at the state championship, they brought home the title of state champions in lyrical, and then placed in the top five for every single category we entered, and also brought home a nomination for best choreography for lyrical. So this was some pretty incredible achievement for this group. This team is not only very impressive with this accomplishment, but they also are very impressive in all areas: academics, extracurriculars, they're involved in so much, community service, part-time jobs, and they dance with our dance team year-round, between like two and six hours per week, but then they also dance outside of here at their studios, about like 20 hours a week. They're there every night, all night. And then, on top of all that, they managed to have some really amazing academic achievements. So our team GPA every year is always consistently over a 4.0. Many of these dancers have over a 4.5. A couple of our graduating seniors are in the top 5%. So they're just, they're really incredible young women, and I'm just so proud of them. I'm so proud of all the hard work that they put forward, and bringing home this state title was really incredible. So I want to say a huge thank you to the school board, as well as Dr. Raiba and Mrs. Palco. We really appreciate you recognizing us tonight, but also for all of your support over the years, we really appreciate it. So, thank you. I'm going to call up each of the athletes by their name. Briar Amalung. Kira Callaway. Bryn Conlin. Annalisa Crowder. Eliza Gorman. Maddie Gorman. Ella Grabey. Kate Jursic. Peyton Coughold. Leanna Cravick. Anna Moravcek. Maddie Morris. Joelle Rush. Katie Sanich. Kylie Sanich. Megan Schuff. Lizzie Stetter. Mackenzie Teague. And Zoe Tran. Congratulations.
Mr. Faust, do you want to try and get a picture of, outside? Okay, sounds good. Ladies, if you want to come up and so we can congratulate you?
Congratulations, awesome accomplishment. What a great accomplishment. Congratulations. Great work. Congratulations. Great job. I'm so proud of you. Congratulations. 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 Great job. Very good.
I know, I'm like, congratulations. Congratulations. Wonderful job. Great work. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Good job, Coach. Great work.
Congratulations.
the entire team and say thank you for being great Mustangs. I do have two questions. How many hours do you actually, how long does it take to compete in the competition?
Oh, it was like over a probably 15-hour day. It was very long. We were in Columbus, and we got there early in the morning. We were, we had to be like the first ones there. It was still dark outside when we got there. And then we were there till well past like seven, so yeah.
So we'll say 15 hours for just the competition.
Yeah.
You said before, but how many hours do you practice as a high school dance team?
Between like two and seven hours per week. It varies, but yeah.
And it's a year-round activity?
Yes, yeah.
My point is, is you don't, you don't become, was it lyrical? I lost it already. Lyric, lyrical, contemporary, large group, you don't become state champions in that by showing up for a 15-hour day. You become state champions and all the other places by putting in seven hours a week, 52 weeks a year. So that was my first comment. My second comment is, is, you know, and I've been thinking about this a lot lately, I wanted to compliment the students, I wanted to compliment their parents. For whatever reason, in, right now, in our world in general, young people can waste a lot of time doing nothing, or doing stuff that isn't productive, whether it's, whether it's TV, whether it's the internet, whether it's YouTube, supposedly the hip kids are doing TikTok and Snapchat and so on, but there's lots of things you can do to waste time away. And you had how many on your team?
20.
That chose to spend at least seven hours a week doing something productive, beneficial for themselves, beneficial for their parents, beneficial for their community. So I just want to take the time to say thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mackenzie, you can let him know there's not room for him on the scene.
You can let him know there's not room for him on the scene.
That conclude, I was going to tell all the students in attendance, they now can leave and do homework. But, but they are smart enough that they didn't need me to prompt them.
Because they watch the meetings.
There you go.
Yeah.
Next on our agenda is public comment. I do have one from Maggie Coza. Maggie, you know the drill, name, address, and you have approximately three minutes.
My name is Maggie Coza, and I reside at 9812 Hazelwood Avenue. Let me start off by saying that today I had the opportunity to come into the preschool and assist in an art project that involved lots of paint, but there was lots of smiles. I have always loved when the schools reach out for parent helpers. I feel part of their day, because as you know, school hours take up a lot of that time for us to see our children. I feel as each year goes by, I lose that type of connection. And as we get into the older grades, communication becomes challenging with your child, so I rely heavily on the adults he sees in his day. It is for my situ, it is for my situation, because I do have children that have a hard time talking or asking for help. I know raising kids comes with a plethora of challenges that we have to pick up and get through, but what happens when you hit a wall and you can't find a way around it? That is what it's like for many kids with different wiring. We aren't the only family who finds it challenging to get the district to understand our children, and we are talking about our neurodivergent children. I'm going to recite a quote from the Cleveland Clinic website. The term "neurodivergent" describes people whose brain differences affect how their brain works. That means they have different strengths and challenges from people whose brains don't always have those differences. The possible differences include medical disorders, learning disabilities, and other conditions. Neurodivergent isn't a medical term. Instead, it's a way to describe people using words other than "normal" and "abnormal." That's important because there's no single definition of normal and how the human brain works. I bring this up because there needs to be a way to look at PBIS or the incentives, particularly at the middle school. The incentive program does not meet the need of our neurodivergent kids where they are at. It is not equitable. I did just learn on my way here that my son did earn his this quarter, but I had to ask multiple times and reach out outside regular office hours to an administrator. You need to know, it was all Jack would worry about. It has been a challenge enough to keep up with my son's particular situation, and I feel just as frustrated that instead of taking the time to really work on this, we're all using our energy to get a renewal passed. These are my reasons, more than ever, I vote yes, because families like ours understand the resources we need to navigate all this are so vital, and I know voting yes gets us closer to achieving the goals we set for our kids. The last time we went through this, I was fearful of losing our parent mentor, who has always been wonderful at helping parents like myself, my husband, and others navigate schools and his IEP. There, this is where I was actually, five years ago, when you announced those cuts. It was the first school board meeting I ever attended. I'm sorry for all of us that can't sit and work on this, because we're all too busy pushing against propaganda that shouldn't even exist. I say that because I'm a taxpayer and a mother with skin in the game, and it's shameful that people don't understand the impact of taking away funding and what it does to our most vulnerable, all for some agenda. I can only speak for my child, but he works really hard. I can tell by the amount of time he spends on homework and the way he talks through his day. He tears up. He's consumed by increased anxiety, and in the last month has started a lot of negative self-talk, and what almost seems like he's giving up. I'm sensing early warning signs of autistic burnout, because he is overworking his own nervous system that isn't visible to the human eye. I don't know how much the rest of you know, but he was switched from a pod from the first half of the year due to consistent, due to inconsistent staffing to meet his needs. He just completed a full quarter in the new pod, and it hasn't been smooth sailing. I'm in discussions with the team, but I feel like we're just not on the same level, and I know who, I don't know who I'm talking to, other than the intervention specialists, who I've only met in person once. In conclusion, we need real proactive work. We need to look at the incentives or the PBIS, not just at the middle school, but in all buildings, and find a reasonable solution that makes it more inclusive and encourages kids to build on their strengths. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. I appreciate your comments. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. The, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is part of our consent calendar, motion to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2024 regular meeting, along with motion to approve the Special Board of Education meeting, executive session meetings from February 26th, 2024. That's our approval of minutes. Next on our agenda is Athletic Department Presentation. Dr. Raiba.
I'm going to turn it over to George and Denny and Jason, who will give an update.
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. Mr. Miko, I just have this item for my, under my agenda tonight, as a discussion item, and then later on, I have a separate agenda for items for your consideration. This item is for the Athletic Department Presentation Quarterly Update. As you recall, in the beginning of the school year, we had discussions, I think this time last year, where discussed about increasing the Athletic Department's budget to provide the basic necessities to operate the sports that we offer. And then part of the feedback was that for us to come back and give quarterly presentations on how they're doing. So I think it was in November, December, we gave an update based on winter sports, and now as fall sport, or springs, or winter sports are concluding, to give an update on winter sports. And as they will go, as Denny and Jason will go over, there's been some success this season with multiple teams. We just saw the dance team, but they'll highlight all the winter sports. Turn it over to Denny and Jason.
Thank you. As George said, you know, it's always the opportunity to share a lot of the team successes, department successes with you guys. And as you'll see in our presentation here, a lot of what we did was above what we anticipated. And I'll touch on it a little bit later, but the successes that our teams had this, this winter was probably the most successful winter season we've had in probably the last five, five years, with the number of conference championships that we had, the state championships that we had, our state qualifiers, and, you know, the overall success of our teams. So looking at the revenue follow-up from our fall, we kind of touched on that last meeting, and then looking at the bottom, so boys' basketball, obviously we had a lot more home games. Our team success, the team finished 18-6 overall, which was their best finish in the last five years. We hosted a lot of double headers with our girls' program. We incorporated a lot of youth events, so the ticket revenue for our boys' basketball was up. Hockey was a little bit, was under budget. We, you know, anticipated 3,000, it was 2264. We had a lot of students go to hockey, which I think was an increase with our, our crowds there, but with that, and students being allowed into contests for free, that's where I think we saw kind of the downfall. What we also did with our hockey is we had our cheer teams go there, and we had some of our other groups that normally don't get to see our cheer programs, our dance programs, they go to those different events to showcase, and that helps to bring in, you know, some more crowds for us that way. Our wrestling, the only thing that we did or didn't do with our wrestling this year was our JV tournament. That was a huge, huge success for us every single year, and with a snow day this year, we felt it was in the best interest not to bring kids on a Saturday when we didn't have school on Friday to that, so we lost a lot of our revenue. We have over 20, I think we had 23 teams coming this year, and when you factor that and with the amount of ticket revenue that we would have brought in with those parents, with those, you know, those outside schools coming in, that's where kind of we've lost out with our wrestling revenue. With that also, our girls' wrestling program took off. So we had 10 girls wrestling this year, and three of them made it to regionals, which was the first time ever. So a lot of the expenses, which I'll touch on, was an increase in our girls' tournaments that they went to. Our girls' basketball, same thing, a team that goes 22-2 or 22-3 the whole year brings a lot of success in. And they did a great job this year with bringing in middle school students to the contests, youth teams of the contests, having our youth teams play at halftime, so all that generated a lot more revenue for, for our girls' basketball program. And then swim and diving, same thing. Some of the meets that we used to host, we didn't get to host this year, or a lot of schools didn't want to come back. I know one thing that they do is they host a co-event with Hudson down at Cleveland State, and that did not happen this year, so those are revenues that we get from the entry fees, so that didn't happen.
So overall?
Yeah, go back.
There's two wrestlings. What's, is one boys' and one?
One's girls' and one's boys'. Correct.
Which one's which?
So the, the bottom one was our JV tournament, was our boys'. The top one was our girls slash, we put both of them on there because one was the 5,600 was our entry fees that we were anticipating getting. The other one was the ticket revenue from our duels that we hosted and those.
So was that, is the bottom wrestling strictly the, the tournament?
It's just the tournament, which is what we, what we anticipated to bring in because of the entry fees and the ticket revenues from that.
How did we earn 1,100 if we canceled it?
The girls' tournament.
Girls.
Okay, so it's, so we did have a tournament. Okay.
Overall, I mean, Denny just gave a breakdown between the individual sports, but overall, we're, for the year with still lacrosse and other, or is this just for the sports?
This is just for?
For winter and fall, for those sports, we're $25,000 over budget for those sports alone, with spring sports still to come, with boys' and girls' lacrosse and, and track. Obviously based on softball, but we don't have admission fees for those, for those
Look at the expenses to the actual budget. You can see the numbers in red are kind of where we're off, and kind of what we determine why. So boys' basketball, obviously, we were, sorry, I can't do that. Changes to our game worker pay structure with an hourly rate that we went to, that made it a little bit more challenging with our, you know, our budget. The football number that you see there, we have yet to, they, they just got the estimates for the reconditioning for us, so once we have that total, and we know how many helmets are going out of commission, as well as shoulder pads that we may have to purchase, that number's going to be decreased. Obviously, girls' soccer, we talked about in the fall, but I'll put it back up here, that was due to less number of home games this year. Last year, I believe they have 12 or 13 home games this year. I think they only had seven or eight, so the decrease in, in that. Gymnastics was only, the only thing that went up a little bit from our estimated budget, and that was because of the rental fee for the number of hours. Obviously, when our team makes it as far, as far as they did to the state tournament, that adds on, you know, facility rentals, practice times for that.
Denny, where does our gymnastics team practice?
So they practice over at Crossroads.
Okay. Thank you.
So looking at some new expenses for the high school for winter, so all the items up on top are ones that we already purchased for our spring athletes this year. And really what we did, so baseball hats, that's an annual cost that normally the baseball program paid for out of their fundraising budget. You know, they get two hats, they get a green hat, a white hat, so we're able to purchase both of those for them. Boys' lacrosse uniform, 10,000, that's what we allocated. They just got brand-new home and away for JV, as well as for varsity. Girls' lacrosse uniforms, the same. Baseball helmets, this is a safety issue. In the past, we had a lot of our baseball athletes would wear their own helmets, or we would have old ones that we would try to fit, and a lot of the athletes liked their own helmets because of their travel baseball, it's something that they keep with them. But from a safety component, they were out of, they're out of age, so we were able to purchase 10 new baseball helmets for our, for our baseball program. Softball uniforms with a little bit of an increase with our softball program. And also, when we initially did this, we never budgeted for softball uniforms. So it was going on almost 11 years since our softball team had, had had any uniforms. So to be able to purchase the softball uniforms for a JV program, as well as a varsity program, that was huge for us. Our boys' volleyball uniform, brand-new sport, they just won their first game on Tuesday, so to be able to give them brand-new uniforms, to be able to compete, you know, and to have the Strongsville Mustangs on their uniform was nice for them. Our boys' volleyball game balls and, and practice balls, believe it or not, last year our boys' volleyball team used our girls' volleyballs. There's actually a different volleyball for boys, so being able to actually get them the right, you know, volleyball for their practices and for their matches this year was very, very helpful. Batting cage net, we are in the process of putting an outdoor batting cage. putting an outdoor batting cage for our baseball and softball team, which was part of our agreement with Premier. So by allowing us the indoor time, they had provided us a batting cage frame, and we just had to purchase the net for it. So a batting cage outdoors is going to be useful for our baseball and softball programs to be able to have a regular pregame ritual or pregame routine where they can go in and they can take, you know, batting practice there. Soccer nets, that seems to be now more of a annual cost with our club teams that we use, our youth teams that use our middle school field and our high school turf, you know, making sure that our soccer nets are up to speed with our game nets, our practice nets, so that the wear and tear of rips can start to cause, you know, major issue for our soccer program. And then the girls entry fees, I think our girls wrestling program went to three different tournaments this year, which was a first. So, you know, being able to provide them the same opportunity as, as boys to compete was huge, and in turn, they were very, very successful in their season. So new things that are still yet to come, the bottom, as you can see there, the potential helmets, either that are going to be, you know, out of commission because of age, there's a ten-year limit with those helmets, or ones that have cracks that can't be repaired, and then also shoulder pads. Last year, our shoulder pad reconditioning, we did in-house with a sprayer. And this year, we sent them away for not only cleaning, but to make sure that the clips and the snaps are all safety secured for our student athletes. As we look at this, we feel that it might be an every year thing to send it out for the cleaning with the shoulder pad clip repair. That's not going to be a, you know, an every year cost, as long as we can clean them internally with the stuff that we do here. And then just going back to what we kind of did with the fall, you know, brand-new football game pants, girls soccer, white, white and green jerseys, girls tennis tanks, basketball fill-in uniforms for our girls, football helmets, golf umbrellas, discus circle for our track team, and our brand-new lacrosse goals and nets that are going, that are down at the middle school for our lacrosse teams, not only for our high school lacrosse teams, but our youth lacrosse teams. Our high school teams do play games on there. They do practice down there when there's track meets at the high school. So being able to provide them with the adequate goals and nets for their program. And then, as we kind of looked at the things that we said that we were going to spend some of our, you know, our budget on baseball hats, tournament entry fees, volleyball, storage cart, lacrosse uniforms, coaches shirts, you know, potential helmets, cracks. I think the only thing that we haven't done is our volleyball storage cart, and that is to come. To see the high school budget in, in action and our team successes for the winter, obviously, hockey was first-ever Baron Cup champions, you know, first time ever in the school's history. GCC champions for our boys swim team. Our dance team obviously was state champs. Our girls basketball was also GCC champs. Our high school gymnastics program was GCC champs. Our girls wrestling program took off. So those are all of the successes that we have, have seen this winter. And I, I would, as I go through the next slide, what I want to talk about is, I really think that what also the Booster Club has helped us with, with our mental, our mental toughness training, and how our coaches, as Mr. Miko talked about with the dance team, you know, we have coaches that dedicate two to three hours every week on a Zoom call with a sports psychologist and myself going through the challenges, the struggles, you know, and those successes that they're seeing in their programs with their athletes, and how they can attack those challenges, and how they can make the athletes a lot more mentally tough, mentally stronger, to perform better. And I really think that, as you can see, that's what we did this winter, you know, sports season. To look at, you know, the overall records just from the last three years of where our, where our boys basketball program was, to where our girls basketball program, gymnastics, hockey, wrestling, boys swim and dive, you know, girls swim and dive, every single program either stayed the same or went up a lot. And that's a testament to the hard work that our athletes are putting in, the dedication that they're putting in, but also with our coaches for their hard work and dedication, and, you know, really making themselves better as a coach to benefit their students and their program. The only thing why I don't have hockey listed, because hockey doesn't compete in the GCC. They compete in the Greater Cleveland, the Greater Cleveland High School Hockey League, and that is divided up into a red division, a white division, and, and a blue. And we, and we participate in the white, and that's broken off into two separate divisions because it's so large. So to say that we are Baron Cup champions, that's more of like the state championship for hockey. A lot of the high schools in this area, that's more of like a city championship, but it's a state championship for us because we know that the, the hard work, the amount of effort, the amount of club teams that have a lot of athletes that go to a lot of other schools, it is sometimes tough to even win a sectional hockey game. So when we have the opportunity to bring up a Baron Cup title, that's a big thing for our students, for our community, and for our hockey program. So as I mentioned, there's five championships this winter between the hockey and our GCC and our dance. And our fifth-place gymnastics finish was the best ever. They actually broke a school record in that process. And then our dance state champions.
Any questions on high school before I turn over to Mr. Kepler?
Okay, flipping over to the middle school. Let me flip my sheet to the middle school. Looking at the revenue, continuing the trend from winter, I'm sorry, from fall to winter, all revenues were up above projected totals. In winter, we were thirty-two percent ahead, and a large part of that was because of the additional wrestling events we hosted. The team is pretty big. We hosted some more home events, and we brought in a lot more revenue from that. And then the success from our basketball teams down there. And then the, the wrestling team had a magical year. They, just that combined with the additional events was the reason for that. Fall and winter combined, we're twenty-nine percent ahead than what we had projected at the beginning of the year. Looking on the, on the revenue side of things, a lot of this is incomplete. We'll know more in the, in the coming months. There's not a whole lot to comment specifically on there. A couple of things I will highlight are, are the football revenue. You'll see we're under budget by twenty grand, but most of that money is going to evaporate in the next month or so, once we start buying new equipment, replacing helmets that are going to be decommissioned, and replacing some other things for that team.
Jason, just, just to clarify, you've, you've said revenues a couple of times, but you mean expenses.
Yeah, my bad.
Just, just for clarification.
Yeah, so this is the expenses one. We're under budget twenty thousand for football, but that will evaporate soon because of the things that will be coming up. The only thing on here that's final, that's over budget, is wrestling. We were over by a hundred bucks, and that's because of the additional events we hosted. I think the ticket revenue for that was about twenty-five hundred dollars in addition. So, so we did pretty good there. Looking at some of the new expenses, I follow up there. We discussed that at the last meeting. New expenses from winter were wrestling singlets, a new wrestling scale, coat shirts, and wrestling mat tape. New expenses to come before the end of the year are seventh-grade football jerseys. If you recall, last year, last year, we replaced the eighth-grade ones. Seventh grade's turn is this year. We'll have to buy two more volleyball nets, some track hurdles, basketball carts, football helmet racks, and some additional shoulder pads. Looking at the middle school budget in action and some of the team successes, the wrestling team, they were GCC champs. Girls basketball, seventh grade. Girls basketball, eighth grade, they were GCC champs. Looking at the bottom there, there's two pictures of the new wrestling singlets we purchased. And the last one there is two cheerleaders doing backflips. And I thought that was a cool pic, so I wanted to include that. So. Winner recap for our teams, as mentioned before, the seventh-grade girls and eighth-grade girls, both were GCC champs. Seventh-grade boys, they finished in second. Eighth-grade boys finished in third. And I, I think just all of that combined, our basketball programs are going to be pretty competitive for a long time to come. Wrestling, again, they, they had such an awesome season. They were twelve and oh in their duels. They competed in four tournaments, won three of them. And then this weekend, they have eight wrestlers competing for a state championship down in Youngstown, which is incredible. That's, they put in a lot of work, going back to what, what Mr. Miko said. These kids practice at practice, and then they go find practice at a private gym to go practice some more. And it's just, the work that these kids put in is, is just simply incredible. Looking at intramurals, bowling, we filled up with sixty-two bowlers. Basketball, we filled up with a hundred and one basketball players. And then the last couple of slides, if you recall back at our last meeting and going back into planning for our new budget, we had discussed, one of the, the needs in doing this was, was the increased participation numbers. And those trends have continued this entire school year. If you look at this graphic here, that, what you see at the top is the increases or decreases for the teams throughout the winter. At the bottom, you see the compiled list of, of all the teams combined. High school, middle school combined throughout the winter, we had an increase of eight percent. Looking at the spring, we, this number will change before the end of the year, but right now, we're, we're seven percent ahead this year compared to last. Going back to the fall, we were eighteen percent ahead. And compiling those numbers together, we are almost eleven percent ahead this year compared to last. And this is the third year in a row that we've seen an increase. And we are twenty-five percent ahead of where we were in twenty-seventeen. This year, we're going to have between sixteen and seventeen hundred student athletes, which is the most in a very long time, maybe, maybe ever. I don't, not sure on that last part. And next year, we anticipate another increase. I don't know if it's going to be at that rate. It's probably going to slow down a little bit here eventually. But we're hopeful that we're going to be able to impact even more wrestlers, or, I'm sorry, athletes next year. And with that said, if there aren't any other questions, that's, that's all we have for you.
I have one question, Jason.
Sure.
It's slide thirteen. It shows that swimming and diving lost eighteen students this year. Do you have any idea why?
Yeah, the youth, the youth program was, was down. We talked with Coach Tom about that, and the youth program has built itself back up. They actually have historically high numbers throughout the youth program now, so that's going to build back up real fast.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Well, thank you guys for your support and, oh, I'm sorry.
If we can go to the participation number slide? The, the totals.
The total, yep.
So is that individuals, or is that activities?
That's individuals.
So if, if a student is in two sports?
That's, I'm sorry, that, that would count as two participants, yeah.
Do we have an, can you, next time, I don't need it now, but can we also see a slide with head count?
Absolutely.
You know, I just, I'd be curious to see if, I, I'm just curious to see how it plays out.
Yeah, if we have more names than, than roster.
Do we have, do we have, you know, a fewer number of students playing multiple sports, or do we just have a lot of students?
Sure.
And I, I'm just curious about the data.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yep.
My only question was, I, that total number, that includes the intramural?
It does not, no.
Oh, it does not?
It does not, yeah. I mean, that, it would be over, well over two thousand kids, yeah, with that.
And to answer your question, Mr. Miko, one thing that I'm working with the boosters on is to start a, a multi-sport athlete recognition board. So outside of athletics, we can have our two-sport athletes with our three-sport athletes. So we'll be able to, you know, essentially tell. I would like to think that that number's lower than what we think or what we would like. But it's always good to recognize those athletes, but to see, hey, if I'm on this two-sport athlete board, or I'm on this three-sport athlete board, it should want to motivate other students to want to be on that board as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. If there's no further questions, that concludes my report for now.
So next on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We've got a handful of things that we want to talk about tonight with the board. The first is following up on our last meeting's discussion on mobile units. So George will put the slides on the board, and you have them in front of you. And I'm just going to ask Mr. Brechner, our operations manager, to come up by the podium to help me out, if there's any questions specifically that the board may have. So last time we met, the direction was, hey, we want you to go through this exercise of every building would have two mobile units. One mobile unit would be for a gifted math, and then another mobile, and the other half would be for intervention small group support. Mobile unit number two would be putting music in there, and whether it's additional intervention support or conference room. So go through that exercise. And so we did that. And I, board has had this for a couple of weeks now, so I'm not going to go through all of the, the nuances there. But it's also important to note that we did this with the consideration. The other thing we talked about last time was half-day kindergarten. And Ms. Bissell made the comment of, hey, if we're going to purchase these mobile units, we need to take a look at half-day kindergarten being at the home building. So as the board knows, but for the community, every scenario we're talking about is with half-day kindergarten, finding a spot for half-day kindergarten at their home building. So the couple of things we asked the principals to do was give us feedback on those two mobile units. And what space issues would it solve based on the unique aspect of the building? What would still be some continued challenges? Again, you've seen those. We've also asked the principals, give us your recommendation of what you would like to see for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year instead of, in terms of no mobile units, one or two. And so we'll get that, to that in a little bit. And then the other thing we asked is that Steve and Keith and his team work with the building principals to determine where those mobile units could possibly go. And so I'm going to have Steve go through that piece of it. So this is Chapman. Unit one is already there. If we would add a second unit, I'll take, give it to Steve to kind of say why that's the spot that would be considered.
So that is the, the best footprint that we can put that on there. Also, it would be the least costly in running any kind of electrical wires to it. From that, we cannot encroach on that property line to the north there on the picture. It's actually not due north, but it's north on the picture. We can't get any closer to the property line than we are already over there on the side of that building. So we're going to have to take some electrical line of what we put into unit one and take that up to unit two. So that's, that's the best spot on that property. On the other side, you do have water mains coming in that, I know I don't mention it very often to the board, but we have some very sensitive water mains over at Chapman that are broken many times. And we also have a gas line coming in on that side of the building. With the requirements for what we need to do with the footers and concrete bases, I, I think it's best we just stay away from that side of the building at this point in time.
So in addition to all of those utility lines Steve talks about, and power, which is important, we also have to look at where is this accessible to students from the building, close proximity? And so those are other reasons that are taken into consideration. I'm going to keep going through this, and so just please share if you have any questions. Did the same thing with Kinsner. The board is, has had an opportunity to look at the impact of, of those. And so Steve, walk us through this one.
I know this is not preferable.
It is not.
However, we are unable to get around the backside of that building. The, the topography of that, you have to remember, these are twenty-five foot, sorry, twenty-four feet. But with the semi and everything else, they need to be able to make some kind of turn. And there is no way to make that turn over there. That would require some very substantial infrastructure and moving equipment, i.e. cranes, to even pick that up and put it over the building to get it to behind. So I know this isn't preferable, but we are able to, with very minimal effort, as far as anywhere else on the, on the footprint of that building, access the electrical vault that's in the front of the building. We would have to chunnel underneath the bus loop and also underneath the concrete pad there in the front. But we could pop out in the electrical room and grab some of the power that's already available there. We, we did weigh that, and I know some people would say, well, what about the blacktop and all of that? That, you know, we weighed that against eliminating just the blacktop and the playground back there. And that, that is something that could be open for discussion, but for the sake of keeping the playground intact and the blacktop, those would be the best locations for those two units, if that's what was deemed necessary. Kinsner? necessary at Kinsner.
Why is one-one and two-two and not vice versa?
Uh, just location next to the, um, electrical vault, so.
Strictly electrical.
So the electrical vault is right here.
Oh, okay.
So I just put it, but the first option, we have an A.T. easily flop, flip-flop there. We're, we're, we're gonna have to rent the equipment to do the tunneling underneath. So that, that can flip-flop if necessary.
So Maraski?
Cameron, can you go back, what, what, why didn't we consider the blacktop?
It was just, come on, Steve.
No, I just, uh, I, I thought that, uh, the elimination of that blacktop area, that's where they play basketball, and that's the playground area. Um, again, that's open for discussion, I just, I was trying to avoid, um, taking over that whole area.
Why couldn't the semi truck go through the blacktop to take it back there? Or no?
The semi truck going here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's an access right here.
So they could, but they could take it to the back of the building?
They could put it right here. We just can't go anywhere back in here.
Can we go between?
Pardon?
Can we go between?
We talked about that today. Crane or helicopter?
Going out that way in that little loop of those people's houses, they'll never even know it's there.
This, this whole, this whole landscape here is a hill.
You can't see it from this.
Yeah, it doesn't.
If you look at it, or, or go forward to the property, there's a pretty steep drop-off that starts right after the sidewalk. And also, the property line is a lot closer than it seems on here in the factory room.
And it's also wet around there, if I'm not mistaken.
Can't, it was, it's in the swamp there.
Yeah. And after visiting today and talking about the sizes of their lunches, imagining, you know, a hundred-and-seventy-five kids just on the playground and not having that blacktop to play on, I, I think that would be hard for monitors and for the kids.
Yeah, Kinsner's one, it's a, it's a beautiful property, but it's one that's very landlocked. And so, uh, you know, if you take a look at this, this is their playground area, which for a building that size is relatively small. Um, and then that's the only blacktop area. So it can be done, but it's just a trade-off.
But then where would they play?
Right.
In the trailer?
In a very.
In the trailer, yeah.
Is there a cost difference?
You're just looking at the difference of how to go through where this electrical vault is here and then take it across the building. So there is an increased cost in wiring in all the back versus just being able to, uh, take a shorter wire and come right across the house.
So you're, you would predict it's more expensive?
I would say so. And also more time consuming to do that.
So why would we consider it?
I'm just, I know.
You said, you said it was an option. I'm trying to figure out why it would be an option, if it's more expensive.
Because, because you asked the question.
I know this thing might be the most popular option, because you have trailer directly in the front. But I'm saying, this is open to our discussion. I'm willing to have it in a day.
So let's discuss. So let's discuss. The blacktop's more expensive.
Yeah.
I don't need to discuss anything. Thanks.
Would it make more sense to put unit one next to unit two and get some, rid of some of those trees for cost-wise of the?
Over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you, you could do that. Um, you would just be accessing the same pipe.
Instead of sending the wires two ways, send it one way?
Make sure that both could fit on there.
Yeah. That seems to make more sense. Or even like that little p, I don't know how big that piece is, that's to the right of unit one, where there's trees?
That's, that's not big enough.
Why?
And there's also a hydrant over here, so you have one of these coming in.
And they're, if you go look, you, they're not that far apart from each other, looking, if you're there, looking at it.
I was just thinking, crossing over that bus lane more than anything, kids walking across that. That little loopy thing? Keeping them on the sidewalk, but.
Aesthetically, if they were all lined up together, it might.
Then you're in a helicopter, looking down.
Yeah, it might look better, I don't know. I, I have to go, I'd have to physically, like, go to this building and look, 'cause I don't, I've been there, but I don't remember, like, how far are the kids gonna have to come out to be in unit one?
So they could go through that door.
Oh, that door, okay, okay.
Or they could access, there's ten doors along there as well.
Oh, okay.
Could unit one and two both fit on that island if, if appropriately set, or are the two small?
Kinda.
Or is that drawing of unit one, like?
So, and then also the reason why it was unit one and unit two was, at first, it was talking about just having one unit at a time. So if we're, we're saying there's two, or we're predicting that there's gonna be two, I definitely can look and measure this and see, um, so that they're lined up there. But due to the, this area out here is pretty flat, uh, and I, for a trailer, proximity to the building, I thought that was the best location for number one. But if I had to squeeze a second one in, I would come up to this section.
Yeah.
For the sake of tunneling or chunneling or?
Yeah.
Would unit two just, would unit two just access the main doors then, to go back and forth?
Correct.
Any other questions on Kinsner? So Maraski?
So, Maraski is actually some of the easiest, um, accessibility off, because of the new section, we have plenty of amps available, um, and they're all housed up here, uh, approximately here. Uh, we can, I'm trying to figure out where to. We can go up unit direction and access, but you could have, and you could, you could flip-flop these, uh, whether it's unit one, two, but, um, it, through, not only just the accessibility for, for running electrical to them, but also the fact that there's a sidewalk all the way around this section. This area is relatively flat. The only thing back there we'd have to navigate are some, uh, drainage, but if, we can place some strategic distance out, messing up a lot of drainage. And then what's not shown here is that the building is also here, so it would be on the other side of that building. But from an operational standpoint, Maraski is, is one of the easier ones to navigate. Um, since we can, we don't have a lot of, any wire inside the building, we can actually, um, run a little roof and some conduit, um, and put the structures there and make it easier to get that back. We just have to rip off some concrete, you know, to get that down.
So when we toured Maraski, one of the things we talked about with unit two is blocking the natural light on the fifth grade wing. Could, could we make sure that unit two was set back a little bit to make sure that those windows?
Yeah.
I wonder the same thing about lining up the one and the two's in there. If those, if there's a window in one, I don't know if that, are those windows?
That's office area.
That's all office.
Unit two's in front of offices.
Yeah. But this would, this would impact the fifth graders.
Yeah, we could, we could back this up a bit.
Okay.
We would just have to extend the, the walk a little bit.
Good on Maraski. So Surar, I wanna talk about a minute because the, the board direction on, hey, gifted and intervention in one, music and extra space in the other, doesn't solve Surar's problem. Um, so again, as a level set for everybody, Surar is, if we bring half-day kindergarten back there, plus an additional first grade section, they need two rooms. So gifted math is currently in the media center, interventions are in a variety of different small rooms, so moving those out to a mobile unit, uh, doesn't help significantly. Maybe music will free up one room, but if you, what, so what we're recommending in collaboration with Greg is the board considering this option, which is placing two fifth-grade classrooms in a mobile unit. If you take a look at it, one of the concepts, concepts was, is that we don't want students to be out there all day. Well, in fifth grade, you are departmentalized, so, you know, there's a teacher that's gonna teach reading, a teacher that's gonna teach math, and a teacher that's gonna teach social studies and science, and we rotate through those every eighty minutes or so throughout the day. So, it would be two fifth-grade classrooms in a mobile unit, one in the building. So for at least one of their core classes, they're gonna be in the building. They'll be in the building for lunch, they'll be outside for recess, and they'll be in the building for art, music, and P.E. during that rotation. So, yes, they will be out in, uh, the mobile unit, but probably for about two chunks of instructional time a day, so we believe that works. If you, if you put fifth grade in there, that frees up two rooms, that gives you your half-day kindergarten room, that gives you, uh, your first grade classroom. Um, and you can keep art and music in their own classroom. If you get a second mobile unit, that's where you could put gifted math and the intervention. It takes gifted math out of the media center, frees that up, uh, and then takes intervention out of the various spaces it is, and, and provides that. So, again, I wanted to go in this detail, 'cause the board needs to consider, are we okay with fifth grade going into a mobile unit? That's the only way mobile units really help solve the problem, without putting art and music on a cart, which would negatively impact those programs. Steve, the location's here.
So, um, we feel like this is the best place for one very large reason, there's a huge gas engine line that goes here. Um, and I'm not trying to overstate it at all, but this, this gas line right here, I have to meet with, um, representatives, um, from a, um, environmental company to make sure that we understand how much gas is being transmitted here. So, uh, I want to avoid that area as much as possible. And we have a water main break, um, and we need to do some work over here. We, uh, we had to make sure that we had all that clear, even though it's, it's far away. That engine line knocks out a whole, um, line on the eastern seaboard if it was to be damaged in the way. So, I wanna stay away from that. So, which leads us to having the two units down here in this kind of pattern. Um, unfortunately, that would mean the dog outfit would get nipped, um, which we have to do at Chapman. However, there is a, a significant issue over at Surar, and that is that we are amped out, um, with all of our power. We're gonna have to do one of two things, and, and depending on the direction from, from the board on this site, one option would be to contact the power company and see if we can quite simply up the voltage that we're getting to the building, and then put in some infrastructure in the building. However, that may not be possible due to the current infrastructure in the building and what it's capable of holding. We may have to, um, ask for another pole to be put out there, another power source to be put onto the property to adequately power these two units. Again, once we get some direction, Keith and I can start that investigation and see which options, and see if either option's available, and if they're both available, which one is more cost-effective for the district. Um, but I, I don't know if just asking to up the, up the power is going to be, um, possible with the infrastructure, so.
What if neither of them?
Pardon me?
What if neither works?
Well, putting an additional pole in there would work. It's just going to be.
And that'll be allowed, like, we'll be able to get?
I have to talk to them and see.
That's what I'm saying, like, what if neither?
Yeah, that's a great question.
I mean, 'cause there's no sense us talking about this till we figure out if it's, is if we have no power, we have, did, everything that we're talking about for this school doesn't matter.
Extension cords. They'll fix everything.
Candles.
Perfect.
Yeah. Get everybody now.
I'd be surprised if the, if the power company isn't going to have, you know, they'll, they'll say it's a new pole, it's a new service, but they'll bring us the power.
That's, that's my, um, thought, is I, I've, I've never experienced anything with a utility company when I said we need more.
Okay, same. I'm, I'm just saying, like, if, you know.
No, if there was some kind of infrastructure even outside here that would not allow us to have a pole, we would troubleshoot it.
Okay.
Those are just the two options, as we just did the cursory investigation and looked in the panels, um, to see. It's just an older building, and they're using every bit of juice that goes in that building to power the building. Um, so it, the reason why it wasn't an issue over Chapman is the type of power coming in. We had to put in a transformer to actually reduce the power, um, to put into the units. If this is not the case, we would just have to get more.
So unit one would hold one fifth-grade class, unit two would hold the second fifth-grade class?
No, each unit has two classrooms.
Okay, gosh, okay.
So, one unit would hold, uh, both fifth-grade classrooms. Another unit would hold gifted math and, uh, intervention support.
Just wanna make sure I understood.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Classhouses.
And so, you know, Mr. Gurkha shared, if that's the plan, then he would move the one fifth-grade classroom near the entryway, so they would all be together.
So one thing we noticed when we toured Surar, um, is storage. Like, there's a beautiful room in the front of the building with a nice window that is almost floor-to-ceiling storage. It would be a great, you know, location for a small group, you know, learning. Is there anything that we can do to help alleviate some of that?
Get a burn?
Sheds. I don't know, like, I, I was just trying to think, like, how could we utilize that space?
You've been talking to Donna, haven't you? Yeah. There's always a possibility of putting a shed here.
Okay.
Storage facility up there, if that's, if that's.
I think that's the, the one challenge that I would say, is we've gotta look at that discussion from a broader perspective, because Surar's challenge with storage is almost every building's challenge with storage, so that, you would just have to.
But it, but it, does every building have the potential for opening up space, human space, by storing stuff somewhere else?
Yes, and we saw it at Kinsner today too, for sure.
I wouldn't, so, so if, if we're talking about the same space, which is behind the music room at the front of the bill, when you go in the building, you take a right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that was originally the back half of the music room that they decided a few years ago to put a, put a wall, as you saw, just a one, like, metal stud wall there. Um, I, I think that's a, it's a good space that could be used, it could be a sensory room, it could be a, a variety of other things that could be used. So I, I can't say specifically in terms of whether other buildings that have storage, it's true storage, versus this was a created storage from under classroom space, um, but that would be something I think we'd have to have a bigger discussion on, just to allocate it equitably throughout the district.
I just think it would, I don't know the details, and I don't, I respect the details, but if we have a situation where we have rooms that we're using as storage, that we could use for humans, for students, for, for teachers, et cetera, and we're looking at mobile units, if it helps problem solve, we should consider it. If we've already considered it and we know it's not gonna help move the needle, then, then I'm not being helpful, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, hey, just move it.
It definitely wasn't big enough for a classroom.
I don't wanna say, move all that stuff out there, make it into an extra space, and I really don't understand the situation.
Once we saw today Surar, we knew that we're bold, it could be utilized by a small group, but nothing was big enough to have a pole. Right. Not even close. No.
All right, with that, uh, in terms of Whitney, I'm gonna skip over Whitney, because Whitney's not in need, they're not recommending, but we did go through the exercise and, uh, put two places of where the, the units could go. So, with all of that, here's some things we, we talked about last time, that, uh, we need direction from the board in terms of where we wanna go. So this, this slide, uh, here is just a culmination of the considerations for next year. So Chapman, um, they already have half-day kindergarten there, we would continue to offer half-day kindergarten, uh, and then we would consider sticking with one mobile unit. The, the board could consider, as we take a look at next year, there's not an immediate need, uh, for a second mobile unit. You could always find some, you know, you could do intervention support thing. There's always things you can find, uh, to utilize it, um, but, uh, the, my concern is not so much this year, it's, uh, Chapman is the building that houses additional preschool sections. So if the preschool continues to grow and we need another classroom, we do not have room at Lun Road, it would have to go to Chapman, and then we would need additional space. Chapman is the one building that's, uh, Chapman and Maraski, I would say, are the two that have a little variability in enrollment. Uh, so we have sections, next year, we're projecting sections, by sections, I mean, how many third-grade classrooms do we have? How many second grades? Whitney has three of everything, it's been three of everything for a long time, so we're not worried about that variability. Chapman goes between threes and twos. And so, there is the possibility of having one of those twos go to a three, and then we are limited on space. So, you know, definitely for next year, keep the one we have, continue with half-day kindergarten. If the board wants to say, hey, we wanna do our mobile unit project once and get it done, I think there's a high likelihood that Chapman would need one in the future. But just so we're all aware, it would be used as an enhancement for next year versus a direct need for next year. So that's Chapman. Kinsner, you know, Kinsner did not have half-day kindergarten this, this year. We would have the board consider that you would offer half-day kindergarten there, that we would add one mobile unit. In talking, when I, when I give these recommendations, these are the recommendations that the principal shared, and I support those recommendations based on looking and talking with them. So Lou is saying, hey, I feel like Kinsner needs one, and that's really all that, that we see being needed. We've got a bubble group that I think next year's gonna be in fifth grade, so that bubble group will go to sixth grade and, and kind of normalize some of the sections. So half-day kindergarten there and one mobile unit. I'll, I'll make note of this once, is, as I said under Ki- kindergarten, or under Kinsner, you could just say, hey, we wanna offer half-day kindergarten at all five elementary buildings and leave it at that. Last time we did that, we ranged from seventeen to twenty-one, I think, but most of them were eighteen to nineteen kids. You could set a minimum enrollment guideline if you wanted, saying, hey, to have half-day kindergarten at Kinsner, you need to have at least this many half-day kindergarten students, and if not, we'll consolidate, because there does become a point where the class size is so small that it, it may not be in the best interest of the overall operations of the school district, so just a consideration.
Do we have current numbers for that? Of where, what is it looking like right now?
For full day, we do. I don't, half-day, the...
We, we don't have half-day yet, they're, they're starting to learn soon, but I know just preliminarily looking at Kinsner and half-day, I think there's about ten families I know that want half-day there. That's where it's coming in.
Well, speaking, speaking out loud, I think the consideration is, is if, if one school has, has ten half-day kindergartners and all the other schools have eighteen, nineteen, then it just becomes an operational issue of how do we, how do we justify that?
Yeah.
And it's, in my mind, it's similar to the conversations we have every year where, at what, you know, if a, if a class has twenty-nine, we're okay. Wow, thirty-one, do we, you know, it, it's, it's past the line, but, you know, then you have, now you have two classes of fifteen, and, and it, there's no right or wrong answer. It's just being, I think, upfront with parents about where, where we're thinking. I would, you know, we have, we, we know we have the issue at Kinsner, and we wanna address it, but we are, I, I do think it behooves us to say, what if there is only nine, ten people at Kinsner that want half-day kindergarten? Is that the fairest solution? And I just wanna be, I, I would rather be upfront about, this is what we're thinking about and concerned about, and if fifteen to sixteen half-day kindergartners show up, it was just five minutes of, of discussion at a board meeting.
Moving on to Maraski, we would can, we currently offer half-day kindergarten, we would continue that there as well, and this is one where definitely one is needed. Again, I, it goes back to the Chapman discussion. If you, Maraski has a lot of variability in their enrollment, and if we would like to address that proactively at one time, then two units would be what you would do. And again, this would be another building where, just like we talked about with Surar, you would wanna consider possibly having two fifth-grade classrooms, use the mobile units to realize some additional space in the building. The, the, the outline that we've already provided would be a great help to them to begin with, but fifth grade may create other options and allow some flexibility for Mr. Griffin to, to look at. Surar, this would be, we talked about last time, Surar would be one where we are saying has to have a half-day kindergarten next year because of our students with disabilities that are there, and we would need to add two mobile units to make everything work with that next year. And at Whitney Elementary School, we'd continue to offer half-day kindergarten and stick with no mobile units there because we've already talked about. They have one extra classroom right now that's not being utilized. If we, if we disperse half-day kindergarten back to the home buildings, they'd have one and a half open, so there's really not a need there. So in terms of what buildings need to have half-day kindergarten, it's Surar and Chapman. What buildings could you consider setting a minimum for and consolidating would be some combination of correct, Kinsner, Maraski, or Whitney. Any questions on the considerations here?
I've been keeping tally marks, so I wanna make sure my tally marks are good.
Yeah.
So I have one column for what we need as far as a recommendation is for next year, and then I have a column of predicted future growth.
Yep.
So I got Chapman, we need one next year, we need one for future growth. Kinsner is one next year, zero for future growth. Maraski is one next year, one for future growth. Surar is two next year, zero for future growth, and Whitney is zero on both.
The only correction is Chapman already has one, so...
So we're just keeping the one.
Yes. So if we take a look at the, oh, I was clicking on my screen out there. So that goes to the gray highlighted row. That is, you know, I've given a variety of options, and so the, what I would recommend to the board is four units is the least we could do to get through next year, and that mirrors your list that you just shared. And then the, the other list, five units just, just adds a second unit to Maraski, and six units adds that second unit to Chapman. And so how that's broken down is, as we've talked about, this is for a forty-eight month lease, and so those are totals for all, for three units, four units, so that's the forty-eight month lease. The second column is those one-time costs that Steve has estimated for all the stuff that he talked about. So the total, total forty-eight month cost is in that third column, and just because we're gonna talk about in a second, how do you fund it? Year one costs are just that, what is year one plus the one-time cost, and years two to four, that's not cumulative, that's just what is gonna be the annual cost for that unit on a yearly basis based on eliminating the one-time costs that, that are there.
None of these numbers include Chapman.
The six units does.
That's just the one that's already there.
Yeah, correct, the, the one that's already there is not included in these numbers.
That's what I wanted to confirm.
Yes, yes. And then as you talk, there's funding considerations, and George, if you wanna share what this would look like in terms of how we would pay for this?
Yeah, we could, we have a few different options that we can consider for funding. First is the general fund, we could use general fund dollars. The next option, we could use permanent improvement dollars, that's the fund where the current Chapman one is being paid off, but to add more to those, we don't know if they could support it right now, but we were also talking about the time we, this time last year when we set up the O-seven-O fund, and we were talking about the, the scope of the bond project, when we set that twenty-five million dollars aside, we were considering, or still considering, there's a debt, there's the Maraski debt that we have that's being paid out of the PI fund. The call date for that is in twenty-twenty-four, so using, well, we intended some of the O-seven-O dollars to pay off that debt, that annual debt payment is two-hundred-seventy-five thousand a year, so if that's paid off in December, that frees up two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars in the PI fund that could be utilized, or just kinda swapped or be utilized for, for the annual payments for, for the mobile units. And the third option is, we've set aside that twenty-five million in the O-seven-O fund, it's been gaining interest through February last, let me back up, last year, from the time we did it to the end of the fiscal year, it gained twenty-five, plus twenty-six thousand dollars in interest, and then through February of this year, we've gained three-hundred-forty-four thousand dollars in interest for a cumulative total of three-hundred-seventy thousand, and that's gonna continue to gain interest while it's in there, so using the interest revenue from those dollars to pay, to fund the mobile units as well. So those are the three options that the board can consider of, of utilizing the payment for the mobile units.
So as, before I turn it over to you, Mr. Mirko, there, there's three aspects of guidance we need from the board tonight. The first would be how many mobile units and where do you want those mobile units to be at? We've given you some options there. The second would be how do you want those to be funded? And the third would be, are we in agreement that we want to have half-day kindergarten in their home building? But we will loop back after the March registration to see enrollment and discuss further, but I, I need to know, are we moving forward with the concept that half-day kindergarten would be in the home buildings unless we have really low numbers? So I'll turn it over to you.
Any other question?
Yeah, if there are more questions.
Yeah. George, if we had the twenty-five million that's in the O-seven-O, is that gaining interest at a higher rate than it would be if we had it somewhere else?
No, it's gaining the same rate.
It's the same.
A lot, when we moved it over, a lot of those dollars were already locked up in investments.
Okay.
So it just got transferred into a different, separate account, and as those investments were maturing, they're just being reinvested into the same investments they would have been otherwise, so.
Thank you.
There's the, majority of those funds are under meters investments, and then we do have about, of that twenty-five million, we have about one-point-two million in Star Ohio, which has an interest rate of about five and a half percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Which, which was an interesting question, 'cause I never even thought of that, but I, I'm under the impression it doesn't matter what fund it is, we have to follow the rules for where we can, where we can invest that money.
Correct.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't, I would just wanted to verify that we, we don't have a choice even if, if we could get a little more interest.
No, we have to follow our investment policy.
Yeah, the, the option doesn't exist.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna at least talk about the funding consideration, 'cause I think that one's the easier one to just talk about. We don't need to make a decision today on that, we need to make a decision when we approve purchases, right? So speaking out loud, there, all, all of the options, you know, could have merit, could have a, a reasonableness to it. Using the O-seven fund interest, I wanna think about a little more. My concern is, is we've, we have stated our goal for that O-seven, O-seven-O fund in money is a down payment on our events, eventual elementary facilities project, and I like, I like the ability to say that's what it's for, and until we hear different, that's what our intention is. So that's the thing I wanna think about. Beyond that, whether it's the general fund or the per- permanent improvement dollars, I think it's just a matter of what is the, you know, what is the best use of that money at the time? Permanent improvement dollars, there isn't enough in that fund, so it's always a matter of what are we going to prioritize and use those dollars for? And then obviously, the general fund is the general fund. So, but I think we, I think as a board, we can all just think through that and evaluate the pluses and minuses and then be able to make a decision of how we wanna pay for it. But when I was, when I was thinking about using the interest, I, I do, I do like the idea of saying that O-seven-O fund is that down payment on our bond project, which is needed and important, and kinda putting a firewall on it. So I asked that everyone think about that. Any other questions or comments on funding? Anybody wanna start the conversation on number of units, half-day kindergarten, et cetera? I'm comfortable with the four. If it's Pollyannaish, Steve can tell us now, but I think what I would be comfortable with is saying we need four, let's get four, but while you're having the conversation, Steve, you can say this isn't a one-time purchase. I bought one last year, I'm buying four this year, and I'm telling you ahead of time, I don't know if I'm gonna need it in two years or three years, but I'm gonna need another two eventually. And use that as part of negotiation and see if, if, you know, if we can, the same way I, you know, sometimes, sometimes companies just want that, that book of business, and they're, they'll work with you on when you want the, want the product to deliver, but they want a contract. So that might or might not give you some negotiation leverage.
Yeah, I can always, I can always try that leverage. The, the aspect of this, though, that needs to be weighed in is that this company is, with other companies I've contacted, are running short on units. So we do potentially run the risk of in a year or two, you know, would they not have one or two units? I'd be hard-pressed to say yeah, or they would create another one if there's such a demand. They just may not have as much traction in other years because they're going to say, well, we'll cross that bridge when we come with it, we'll make more units if that's what you want. But I can definitely have that...
You can have the conversation, and if it resonates, we'll take advantage of it. If it doesn't, we'll move on, assuming, assuming that's the will of the board, but I'm uncomfortable with the idea of just buying extra units that we don't need today.
I think the one concern I have, I would add one more to that, and that would be at Chapman. I know that was kind of like one of the bubble ones that we were talking about here, but when Laura and I toured it, there were some things that were severely concerning. I don't need to share them all, but teachers teaching in very less-than-ideal circumstances, teaching from, like, doing meetings from cars because there's no space, I mean, it was, it was problematic, and I, I worry quite a bit about our students, specifically our students with special needs, if we continue there without giving them any more relief. And the other question I had in that regard is, we have to enroll preschoolers, right? If they are, and so if we have no room for a preschooler and we get one more that we cannot put in a classroom, where, where would we put them?
Yeah, so by law, if a student turns three and they're identified as a child with a disability, we have to either provide them services in-house or pay for those services at another provider, itinerant services in a local preschool if that's what the parents want, so. And then there's, based on state guidelines, typical peer for every student with disabilities. So, so yes, we, we tend to have that room where we can grow, but i- if we're completely full, we, we either have that option of adding another classroom or having to place them somewhere else and pay for that service.
Do we know currently how many, and I know Megan talked about it, we don't have a ton of room.
By this time of year, i- it's getting tighter. Andy, do you know, off the top of your head? How, how many spots we still have left in the preschool?
I don't know the exact ones.
Yeah.
We're okay right now. I think we're gonna make it, it always gets tight this time of year.
And that's what I'm worried about.
You start next year with all, with the space, and then you fill it up the year.
So that's my second concern is, like, that's a real problem. If we just literally have nowhere to put them, and we haven't planned for that potential, we're in trouble. It's gonna be, you know, more costly potentially of having them to service them elsewhere than actually doing it ourselves. So that would be my only addition. I mean, I could also justify the second one at Maraski based on what we saw, but Chapman, I feel like, is more urgent than Maraski.
Like I said, we toured all the elementaries, we toured the preschool. Chapman was our first, our first visit, and we both walked away kind of stunned. We're lucky that we have the staff that we have that are making things work, and our students are thriving, I mean, but they are really on top of each other in that building.
And staying with the current model, that doesn't change. None of those inside the building is gonna change.
Where's the, the disconnect? Do you see the same level of issue? Why, why isn't this your recommendation, I guess is the, the blunt way to ask the question?
Well, the, the part that I would say is, is Kaylee, the principal there, she feels comfortable with, with one unit. I, I think there's a couple of things. I, I think the, first of all, there's challenges with having mobile units, right? So I, I think the idea of having one is challenging, having two is challenging, and so a part of it is, also, I think our principals, they care about our district, they care about the expenses, so of looking at, I, I, principals that say, hey, I've got two more sections that have to come in here and I've got nowhere else to put 'em, they feel comfortable saying, my recommendation is we need this. That's not the case at Chapman. They have room for every section that will be there for next year, so I think from a principal's perspective, and I, I respect the, the recommendation from Kaylee, is that, hey, it may not be ideal, but we can make it work, and if, if, if we have the additional unit, we could use it to support small group intervention supports that are there. I think one of the things that we have to think about too is what supports go out in the mobile units? We've talked about not having supports for students with disabilities out in the mobile units. Chapman, a lot of their supports, and I can't speak specifically, but some of the things that I believe you're referring to are supports for students with disabilities, OT, PT, speech therapy, things of that nature. Do we want to say, you're going to go into the mobile unit, or do we wanna say, we're going to send fifth grade out into the mobile unit, so we then divide those interior classrooms? That becomes really challenging for, you know, from a human resource management, that becomes challenging. And so I think those are what are some of the reasons for the recommendation of, we can make it work, and, and that's why I would, we've talked about it, but, you know, not having her to speak for herself, that's why I would say one was recommended.
Fifth grade in the mobile units? Fifth grade in the mobile units? How reasonable is that?
I find it to be reasonable. I, I find it to be reasonable, put in context of the space challenges we have. You know, we take, we take a look at, we've, the one mobile unit, we've got gifted math out there. Gifted math spends seventy to eighty minutes out in the mobile units. Basically, you're looking just to do that twice, right? That they'll spend seventy or, you know, one hundred and sixty minutes out in the mobile unit besides rotating. I think if you take a look at, if you take, the space is a nice space. You know, it's got natural light, it's a, it's a good open space. If it was in the building, nobody would blink at it, right? Because it's a, it's a nice open space. And I think the fifth graders have the maturity to be able to manage their materials, go in and out, be okay with it. I don't think, you know, it would be a major issue from a variety of things. It was, you're going to have kids spend a little more time out there than they would have otherwise. But I, I feel like, you know, I feel like it's a, it's a good use of that space.
I have one concern. I actually think we should try it. The only way we're going to know is if we can do it is someone's got to be the guinea pig. This is the one that makes sense. But I do want to make sure we're really careful because there is a potential, if we don't do it right, that students could be in there for three out of three sections. Because the gifted math is in the next trailer. So that's my only point of concern is to make sure that we're careful that, you know, one kid doesn't end up seventy minutes, seventy minutes, seventy minutes out of the trailer.
That's a great point, Michelle. And one of the things we can look at is maybe the one teacher that stays in the building is.
Gifted math?
Would be, well, ELA or one of them, yeah. So they make sure, we'd have to pick, strategically pick the teacher that we know all kids would have to come in to have that class.
Yeah, that's a point.
So if that, if that's reasonable and it solves a problem, do we need, does it solve a problem at other, at other schools if we do the same thing?
Well, I, I think one of the things that I would recommend is that we, we get out of the weeds of who, determining who is going to go in the mobile unit and let the principals work with their staffs to do that underneath certain parameters. And those certain parameters would be, hey, you've got fifth grade, you've got, you know, somebody that's not going to be out there all day. And the really, the only thing we're saying no to is students with disabilities are not going to be in the mobile unit. Annie and I have talked about that and don't feel comfortable with that. So, so that's something that we feel should be the, set some general parameters and, and let them figure out how to move it around with. Somebody may say, hey, I think it's best to put music on one half and band and orchestra on the other half and use it for extra space otherwise. Let them do that if that, that makes the operations of their building smoother. But those are, I, I would like to provide them with options to do what they see as best.
And that resonates? The only, the only opinion that I don't think we've asked is the parents of the potential for, for fifth graders and.
You have one right here.
And what's your opinion?
I just gave it to you.
Guinea pig it is.
I would love to be a guinea pig, so I have to say.
You know, just, just to speak plainly, that would be my concern is it's, it's all reasonable. It all makes sense to say it out loud, except that, that parental opinion is, is important. And I'm glad we have one. But so far, that, that one that we have, I don't think is going to come to public comment. So, okay. Again, based on the conversation we've had, I'm comfortable with the recommendation and give Steve a shot in the dark at some leverage. We'll see what happens. I mean, at the end of the day, all we can do is have a conversation with the suppliers, right? That, that's my opinion. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get an extra one as a what if.
So what, I'm sorry, what is the directive?
I don't think we've made a decision. And you guys have any thoughts? Because we're kind of provided here.
Well, the, let me get this right. The four units, would that be half day kindergarten in all the schools then? With the four units?
Correct.
Okay.
With, with the proviso of a minimum.
Correct.
For half day kindergarten.
But we won't know that till the, a few more weeks.
I'd say we see what we could do with the four and say, hey, we're looking to get one more, two more in a couple of years and then if we can't have a.
But you're going to pay a lot more for those.
For which?
For, if you say next year, like, hey, you know, build us a unit.
Well, not if they're, not if they could work something out now and be like, hey, we want to do this next year.
Good luck with that.
Steve, I don't see, I don't see these num, Steve, I don't see these numbers being radically different than the, the one that we bought.
Correct. Yeah, it hasn't. Where, where the, for me, where the question is going to come in is all the different infrastructure that we're going to have to do. That, I mean, those numbers I gave you are accurate for the information I have. But when I look at Surrar, that, there could be a little bit more of an investment than what you're seeing on the slide. I just don't know until we get to that, to that point. I've never put an additional power source on a property to get in context of what that costs. So, if that's indeed what happens. But the numbers are saying pretty true in the industry. I mean, there is some increase. I can talk to the salesperson and, you know, try and see what their trends are and what they're, what they're seeing. I just think the demand right now, fortunately, the demand is so high that they've been keeping these rates pretty, pretty reasonable. I've also seen other companies and had other quotes and, and they're not in this area, in, in this same vein. A lot of them are a lot more expensive, so.
Will your team have time to prepare for all four of them this summer on top of everything else that they do?
He was smiling so much today when we talked about all of it.
But the one thing is, is we know, now know the plan.
Yeah, you know, before it was for us, a road not traveled. Now it's traveled. So once I get the directive, I can start working with the city, working with an architect. So that way it's not such a rush. Because if we're talking about four, five, six, you know, that's, that is some work for us to prep the land, to get everything in place, to get the permits in place. But like I said, now it's a road that we've traveled, so it should not be as lengthy or as rushed as it was before. And I can, I know who to call and, and how oft, what committees I need to be a part of and talk to in order to get this done, so. For me, it's just having the decision earlier rather than later. And then also from the salesperson I talked to, you know, they are getting other schools that are in the same spot as we are. And people are calling around and trying to get the inventory in place. So the sooner we can make the decision and then move forward with the purchase, that we can nail down the inventory. You know, of course, the easier the process for me and my departments.
I just wanted to make sure there's, you know, the discount, I wanted to calculate the discount to buy more. And there is no, there is no appreciable discount. We can have Steve say, if I buy five, can I get one free? But there is no appreciable discount.
If we were buying a Kia four years ago.
I feel like if the recommendation is for the four and that's taking in all of the considerations of what the building staff has said, I feel comfortable with that. But if we feel like we really are going to need this, and I'm not there on the day to day, so I don't know. I'm looking at it in theory on writing, or in writing. So on paper, it sounds like it is needed, but I don't, I haven't lived it, I haven't walked it, I haven't done it.
Just to clarify for everybody, if I'll go real quick, the, the four is highlighted just saying that's the minimum that we need.
Right.
So I wouldn't.
That's the recommendation.
So I, I wouldn't say that this is what we're, we're giving you the option. So what, as a minimum, we need is the four. If you want to address the other ones, the five and six are there as we've talked about, so.
Well, I guess for the six, if Kaylee says that the six, if the second one is not needed at Chapman, then.
Well, the six up there would be two Surrar, two Maraski, one Kinsner, one Chapman. Oh, okay, right. So if we could, got rid of the one at Chapman, so the five.
Yeah, you can interchange the numbers however you want them, yeah.
I mean, if we put the second one at Maraski, we could potentially have Encore have dedicated space. And the art teacher talk to Michelle and I about, you know, what she's been able to do with having her room two and a half days a week. Imagine what she could do if she had her room five days a week.
I feel like I'm comfortable with the five.
I would love to see a five. I'd be comfortable with six, but I know, I know Rachel. Because there, there's just no way you can sit here and tell me in like two years, we're not going to go back to these people and say, oh my God, we need like, I mean, we're just kind of spinning our wheels, like.
But, but to be clear, we're spending that money today when we don't need to spend it today.
Yeah, but you might be spending a lot more in two years for what you could have gotten. But, I mean, that's always the, the.
Inflation is always a factor.
Right. So yeah, I guess you have to factor that in.
That's why, that's why I asked Steve, have, have the dollars mar, markedly gone up? Because our interest rate, the interest we're getting on savings has also gone up.
Right.
So, it's not a right or wrong answer, it's what do we think is best? But I want to be clear, Cameron, you said the gray was the recommendation.
The gray is the minimum that we've got. So, yeah. What, what I'm saying is I don't want that to be taken as we're not supportive of more. I'm just saying we can't go less than that. So four is what we have to do. As we've talked about, Maraski and Chapman are the two that would be not, we're, we're, those four are solving immediate needs that we have to solve to be in a good spot for next year. The fifth and sixth one would solve needs, but that need may not be pressing in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
But it's not like the sixth one wouldn't be used. Is that like?
It would be.
Right, it's not like it would just be a vacant trailer sitting there either.
I guess that was a comment I was going to make after touring all the buildings, that I think that we have very, very generous principals and teachers. They are working in some cases in, in, they're making things work. Like today we saw a circle of carpet, not bigger than this, where the woman was doing learning with students that are hearing impaired. Like that was her entire space to work with this kid on the floor, was a circle.
We could tell her.
Of carpet in a storage room.
Yeah, I see.
And they have done a really great job of making use of every corner, but every glass vestibule at Surrar is filled. Maraski, there was that one little tiny, they like have an off, office in the hallway.
In between the new part and the old part.
In between two like doors. I mean, and those are staying if we don't do more. And I think, I mean, they're making it work, they're doing great, but as a parent, do I want my special needs students serviced in the hallway? Probably not. And Mr. Gurka did share that concern today about some of these things are private. At Surrar right now, they've got two, two sets of, I don't know what the two were, but they have private phone calls about IEPs on the regular. And right now, the only thing that divides them is a curtain. I mean, so I feel like, I think if you ask them what would make our learning as close to ideal as we could get, this isn't even going to come close. But I think that they're, I, I suspect they're being very generous and saying, we're going to make some tricky situations work for longer for the sake of cost, not for the sake of students. And that's my fear.
I'm still on the six train. You might not get me off that, but hey, we vote on it, so. I, I just, I, I, by the time we get these in and next year rolls around, it'll be like, now we need more, more room, more space. You know, I mean, I, I.
I think we always talk about even how the schools are saying, you know, if we had a sensory room for, you know, for kids to go, if they just need to relieve themselves from the classroom. Knowing that the unit would not be unoccupied, not just a vacant trailer on the property, I feel comfortable with six, if there's a plan of something going into it, of anything.
Oh, I'm confident that every principal would take advantage. They, they wouldn't just like leave it, you know, they know that there's money invested in this, they will make the best use. I, I trust that they would do that, yeah, I do. I just, ten it is. Before we leave, you know.
I'm sure they would, it'd be on the roof, but it'd be used.
Do we have, Jenny, do we have, I know somewhere in our enrollment directions, what's the change, they're trying to upward next year? Because that's the other thing.
For which building? For all of them or?
Well, I mean, does it affect any of them? Because I know some of them are already on the cusp of, if you get one more student, they don't have enough room.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, Chapman right now and, you know, they're at fifty-seven students in, in fifth grade. And remember, the, the levels are thirty per class. So they're currently sitting at fifty-seven right now. I mean, it fluctuates, right? So I, I do have them going down a section in fifth grade, but.
To two from three?
To two from three.
But that could change.
I mean, it could if you get, you know, I mean, there's room for three more students, but. You know, we do have a new section in fourth like Cameron alluded to, so there's seventy-six in fourth grade. So that, that section will go to the fifth grade next year and y'all have to add back a teacher. And then, you know, third grade will come up to fourth grade and that's at fifty-two. So you would probably have, again, you know, one, two sections there. You know, right now, third grade is sitting at fifty-two, so that, that's already, if I reduce the section there, that's at twenty-six per class. And we try to keep that at twenty-five, so that one's, and that's the hard part right now. You know, it just fluctuate, so that's the situation.
And that's currently enrolled that we know are like planning, but that doesn't take into account anybody who moves here or moves out.
No, that's, that's current numbers right now. But again, people move out, people move in, and so that is just a game all from now until July.
But on the whole, we should go up. So those students are going somewhere, right? Like we are still trending up in our overall enrollment.
Yeah, and typically it's at the primary level, you know, I mean, that's where we get most of our new enrollees is K to three.
I have a question that might be silly. We're talking about obviously being responsible with taxpayer dollars in this. And this would directly go towards benefiting the students and going into their education. Speaking around the subject, would these fears not bother us if we pass this levy on Tuesday, this renewal? Is, is that, is that something that like we'd feel comfortable with it then if that, that money going into there?
Spending this money if it doesn't pass? I feel like it's something that has to be done.
Right. But, but directly benefiting the students with the taxpayer money of what we're doing, that seems to be a big issue of what we're facing of not spending the money on them? This is spending it for the edu, this is right here, we're negotiating, what do we feel comfortable spending this money on? Because we want to be stewards of this, we want to be responsible, because we are worried about what could possibly happen in upcoming weeks. This right here is what we want to do for the kids. And we, I mean, ideally speaking, like I was joking, but if we need ten units, like maybe we need ten units because we can't build schools overnight. We can't pass anything to get those things built tomorrow. I think this is proof of why Tuesday needs to be successful so that the kids can have this and we don't have to worry about what we're not going to be spending money on.
I don't, I don't think of it that way. I just focus on we need, we have the space and we have to, we have to make a decision. But everything's connected one way or the other.
Right.
I couldn't aspire Richard.
I don't even want to, I, I don't, I, for me, it's we need to give him operational direction. So if the board wants to see a quote for six, we need to tell him a quote for six.
Isn't that it?
This is, this is the quote, but he then needs to go and secure it.
Yeah, I mean, I, they're just waiting on me to tell them, I mean, these are the numbers, you just.
Right.
Times them by two to six and, so those, those numbers are real. I mean, that's the quote that we're going to get for the units.
So the fluctuation would only be in-house costs.
The one times plus.
Yeah. Supplying electricity.
Of putting the infrastructure in place to provide power to the units.
Does anyone not feel comfortable with six? Anyone like adamantly against six if it's needed?
I've already said, I think four is, four, and I looked at it as four was the recommendation and.
If your name is not Richard, does anyone have any feeling about six? How do you feel, Laura?
Again, I, I, I think we need five or six. And I understand, you know, that we are, we need to be conscious of what we're spending, but.
Again, I, I, I think we need five or six, and I understand, you know, that we are, we need to be conscious of what we're spending, but I also, you know, saw what I saw, and I think I would be comfortable doing five or six.
I feel like six is a good option. And I think that that speaks for the community of wanting to see money invested in the children as well, so I don't think anybody should really have any problems with that, because there's been a lot of outcry of how are you spending the tax dollars on the kids, and this is directly benefiting them. So that should make everyone very happy, including the teachers.
I was trying to compromise.
Okay, then good, five.
I think Moraski would absolutely use it, I just described some of the situations that are not going to be remedied by one. And I do have, even though, you know, maybe parents haven't complained yet, I do have concern about some of the, the places that those kinds of services are being provided. So I think Moraski can use it, and they would utilize it well, but do I think, if we have to pick one, I would pick Chapman. Hopefully, because I already outlined, and I can, I can live with that for right now.
So, just to get into the wicket, five doesn't put one at Chapman.
It, it could, it would just flip flop.
It could, you just, yeah, we could move.
The second one at Moraski would put it at Chapman.
Five is five, wherever we put the five is absolutely.
But my point is, is that's a recommendation.
No, tho, those are, the, the ones that are listed there, let me back up, yes. Kaylee said that she did not want one for next year. So, so that's the part of, that goes to the chronology of what the principals would ask for.
I respect the idea that we need the space, and I'm not questioning it, but is there any resonance that the board is playing chess and moving pawns around? And saying, there's this, well, we need one at Chapman, we need one of that, versus saying, this, unless I'm misunderstanding it, Cameron, this is the recommendation. If we choose four, this is where the four should go, if we choose to invest in five this year, that's where the five should go, and if we choose to invest in six this year, that's where the six should go.
That's how the table's created, yes.
So I would, I would think as a board, we should consider what number we're comfortable with, and if whatever that number is, we should follow the recommendation. Which brings me back to my suggestion of four.
But that's not the recommendation, that's just the least amount we need.
We definitely need that.
How many you want?
I'll take five or six.
Got to pick.
How many you want?
Six. We're banking on the fact that we're thinking, like, we have fifty-seven students right now at this point, we're hoping nobody else moves in, like, we're just, we're guessing, we're holding our breath, we don't really, we can't predict that. Six.
You have, your marching orders.
See if we throw an extra one in too, for seven.
Okay, let's, let's quit while we're ahead, let's quit while we're ahead.
All right, thank you for that discussion. Steve will go and, and start working on that, we'll come back in, once half-day kindergarten enrollment is concluded. What I would say, here's going to be the challenge for the board on half-day kindergarten, unfortunately, that's our most popular enrollment, from about August first to the first day of school. So, you're going to have to make decisions before some of those things are finalized possibly, wouldn't you say, Jenny, half-day kindergarten, or kindergarten in general is the, is the one that happens, so.
Well, I have one final question.
Yes.
In terms of, you provided the board options for Surar, like, just whatever, is that a decision to have at the meeting?
Yes, I, I didn't hear any opposition from the, or, you know, I, I guess what I would say is, hearing what Mr. Miko said, I think, not this upcoming Monday, but the following Monday, I've got a parental update, I'll share what the board has given guidance. I'll give the opportunity for any feedback that may be, and we can take that into consideration as the principals decide, but right now, the parameters are kind of as we outlined it at the meeting, is that okay? All right, the, the next thing that we wanted to talk about is just talking about the PBIS SEL board goal, so I'm going to ask Andy to come up to the podium to help me out with the discussion here. So, just to kind of remind everybody on the document, there are a variety of questions on PBIS and SEL that we shared responses for the board. A couple months ago, we asked the board for, what are your desired outcomes, what would you like to see in terms of our work with PBIS and SEL across the district? And I just kind of reforma, reformatted those into more of an action plan. So if you take a look at the middle column, I've div, divided these up in a couple phases. So the first phase would just be, hey, we started this in January, and let's get to July. And so the middle column and the last column are what, what you shared was some outcomes or targets you wanted us to hit, okay? What I did is I took some of those that I thought were big picture, here's where you want us to get at the, when all this work is done, what's the final point you want us to get to, that desired outcome piece of it, and I put it in that green. So, you said, hey, we want internal, external understanding of PBIS, and what it looks like in practice, we want equitable offerings for all of our students across buildings, and we want to create an environment in our schools where all students can succeed. So those are the big picture targets of what we want to see in our desired state. The middle column is kind of how we get there, and what I put in phase one is that we want to align strategies between the buildings, such as restorative practices. We want appropriate staffing levels in all aspects of our operations, we want social workers to be able to support tier one, and then the last row is a variety of things on data and tracking. So Andy and I spent some time working on this, you know, actual action steps to work towards it, that's what our role is, but we have some clarifying questions that I'd like to discuss with the board and get further guidance. So, so the first one is this, you can see it on your screen, but I'll, I'll read it, it's just a comment. So when we talk about this first one, that we want to have alignment and strategies between buildings, such as restorative practices, the question we want for the board to give us guidance on is, what are some of those prior, prioritized strategies that you may have? So, when we talk about alignment of strategies in this area, that can look like a lot of things, and restorative practices was one example. Does the board have any further guidance that they would like to see in terms of what strategies you'd like consistency on amongst all buildings? And as you're pondering, Andy, you want to give a, maybe, maybe a few ideas of some of the things we're looking, we're, we're doing, or maybe things on your mind about consistency amongst the buildings?
I was thinking more in terms of just the idea of restorative practices and the consistency across the district. When I think about that, I think about that we're at a very beginning level there, and some of that is happening through our professional development with trauma-informed care and education, meaning that if you are trauma-informed, you're going to be thinking about taking a restorative approach when you need to in a classroom. So, it's, you know, some people call it like restorative practices, they might, they call it little, little RP and big RP, because sometimes out there, there's programs called restorative practices, restorative justice, and people sell those as programs. But conceptually, restorative practices is really the time it takes for a staff member to have a, a healthy, problem-solving collaborative discussion with a student about what's going on, and how can I help you? And what are your needs on the table, and here's my needs, and let's figure this, let's figure this out a little bit. And so that's a healthy process that takes some professional development and training, but also takes time from a teacher's standpoint, so.
So there isn't alignment today?
Alignment meaning every, here's how I'm going to interpret that, alignment meaning kind of like, every building's doing it to a certain level all the time, is that kind of what we mean?
Sure, or, or this building finds value in its restorative practices, this building doesn't.
I think.
I'm trying to figure out what current status.
Yeah, I, I think that every leadership and staff in every building see a place in it. I think there are different learning points and different implementation points for it. Does that help?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Again, it begged the question, so I wanted to verify it.
Yeah, okay.
So you said alignment and strategies such as, are there other strategies that we should, we should be aware of and think about?
Other strategies for restorative practices?
For PBIS SEL.
Is this the behavior, are we in a behavior specific? That's how I was looking.
Yeah.
So for, policy for managing behavior.
I'll give an example while you're thinking. I, I think it's even smaller for me, and I, I bet Maggie can attest this too, my son has been in two different pods, the two different pods do not even manage behavior the same way. So I think, I, for me, I'm going beyond buildings, that's great, but like, if we could get between pods or between grade levels at the middle school, having similar expectations and similar punishments, I would, I would start there. So I mean specifically, like, these behaviors have, you know, consequences, and these ones don't, or they, it's all over the place. He's getting rewards in some pods, he's not getting rewards in other pods, some pods you get in trouble if you don't bring a pencil, some, some you don't, seventh grade doesn't have anything at all, like, that's what I'm talking about, like, can we just start with one building before we start looking overarching?
I have heard that from other parents, well, you're a parent of a child, but that they're very confused on the, how it's implemented, or if it's implemented, or they might get in trouble for something insignificant, but then get a sucker for something that they did, they're very confused. It's not coherent, and parents, well, to be very honest, parents don't like it. I'm wondering, and this is just, have you ever taken a survey of teachers anonymously and asked them? Because they're not going to tell you, I, I love teachers, not that I don't trust them, so who's ever listening, that, that does not mean that. It just means it's a little bit harder for them to say the things that the administration wants them to do, and to be the ones to say, like, we don't understand this, we don't like it, we don't get it. I think if you did it anonymously, I think you would be surprised at some of the things that you heard. Because I don't think, personally, from my personal experience, I don't think a lot of them buy into it, or they don't know how to. But it, I, I've tried, I've read about it, I've, I've gone on the state site and read about it, it's very out there, it's very confusing to me. So I don't know how teachers can all align this and incorporate this, where it's not confusing even to the kids. Or do we have data saying like, oh, all of a sudden now, you know, all the kids are doing this much better? I mean, do we see that?
I, I don't think we have consistent confusion in the district, I think we have a pocket of confusion, and I think that there is confusion, and there needs to be distinction between what we're calling PBIS and what we're calling maybe building-wide, or classroom-wide, or pod-wide, team-wide incentives. Because they're not the same, but they're getting lumped into the same bucket. And so what I would say to that is, when we have incentives for saying, hey, you know, no missing assignments and you get this reward, that's not PBIS at all.
Then why do they?
That's incentives, and that's a decision that's being made at a building level or a classroom level. So, the difference is, for PBIS, it doesn't have a target like that, so that's, there's like a benchmark or a target, hey, you hit this target, you get this prize, that's not PBIS. PBIS is, here's our behavioral expectations, I spontaneously see you model that, I press pause, I talk to you about that in a restorative way, and, but not really restorative, but in a healthy way to say, great job, I just saw you do this, thanks for doing that, and this is why I want to recognize you for that. It's kind of like your awards you do at every meeting in the moment. I saw a kid do something awesome, and I want to let you know. That's PBIS, and we're, a lot of times making confu, you know, we see these different things happening, and then we kind of put it all, lump it all together. So I agree, there is confusion, but there are buildings where there is no confusion. The staff clearly know what PBIS is, they know what restorative practices are, and they're in a good place. Does that help?
Andy, just to ask another question on that, the incentive piece came into play, I think, when we originally started PBIS, is not, not for the kids to get a reward necessarily, but for the adults to remember to recognize students for positive behavior. And I think there's been a little, you know, confusion between that moving forward.
Yeah, so that's part of the conversation too, if you, if you, if you remember, like, back in October, we, you know, administratively, we kind of checked our, what we call our acknowledgement systems in the buildings, and said, hey, it looks like we got a little too heavy on giving things to kids, to students, right? And we've pulled that back, and we spent a lot of time at, together, talking about what's the real purpose, and a lot of buildings have done a lot of hard work there, and I applaud them. But I think, going back to Ms. Bissel's original comment, that's where we're confusing what a building or classroom wants to do to incentivize versus what's PBIS.
So I guess my first response to this then is, can I get a chart or a something that says, this is this, this is this, this is this? Because I think if I'm confused, so are the teachers, so are the parents, and so are the students.
I completely agree with you there.
So I can't answer any more of this until I can see it all categorized.
Yeah, and I think part of that discussion too is administratively, us supporting our principals and staff with the idea of what I would call inclusive practices. Making sure whatever we're doing to help improve a student's educational experience or skills, that it's inclusive. Because I think what I heard earlier today is a concern that some of what might be well-intended by an educator ends up maybe being exclusionary. So I would not support that, and I would always say that there needs to be a filter on for the educators and the leaders to say, hey, here's what we're trying to get out of this, is there going to be somebody that actually is harmed by this unfairly, that's not our intent, but is there? I, I feel like that that needs to be a guiding question, that we need to support more.
So in terms of other things that you're hearing or wondering about that relate to how these things are valued by us, they're important to us, that we would want to see consistency, whether it starts in the building or whether it goes across the district? You know, I've been taking notes in the comments as you've talked, is there anything else that's on your mind that we could set as that target, so we can work towards that? That, that's the whole goal, let's narrow in what's on, important to the board that aligns to the work that we're doing as a district, so that we can work towards that with, in this one, through our strategic planning work.
Are we going to have a chance to come back? Because I feel like I'm so twisted up in like, what's what, like, is behavior connected to incentives, is it connected to punishment, is it connected to PBIS? Do the, like, I'm so twisted up in all the language that I, I don't, I, I need to like untwist and come back to it? Because I, I don't think I could give any clear conception of what I'm thinking until I can untwist all of those things.
I think too, there was a lot of confusion, because even the PTAs were asked to like, donate money to buy things for PBIS. So if we're not giving incentives, we're not giving things out, then why is the PTA doing this? See, that's what's confusing, like.
So I, I, I think, I don't want to interrupt, I just want to answer your question.
No, no, go ahead.
So, I, I don't want to mislead you in any way. So, are there times where through PBIS, we might give something? The answer would be yes, it's how. It's, it's how you got that. So, here's an example, let's say, I saw ten students spontaneously model our behavioral expectations throughout the month, and they. and they all got a ticket, and now they get to put the ticket into a jar and we spin a wheel and maybe one of them or two of them get something because of that. That, it's, it's because we, they were modeling an expected behavior that's going to help support our positive climate and culture, which is essential to restorative practices, by the way. Because the, the idea of a restorative practice is the child has an intrinsic motivation to be a part of that climate and culture, so they want to go through that practice. So if I take a timeout for that, to say that, because PBIS is very much tied to the idea of restorative practices. That's different than saying, hey, let me look at the classroom, who did their homework? Who didn't? You know, homework kids, you get a piece of candy, non-homework kids, sorry. So that's, do you see the distinction I'm trying to make there?
Right, right.
I think it's difficult too, trying to motivate, trying to find the motivation for the kids. Not in this situation, but I've heard kids actually say things along lines of like different schools that give tickets or coins or whatever, like, oh, you're always so helpful. And they're like, well, yeah, that's because this person always gives stuff for that, or gives the incentive for it. And they know who to be helpful around, they know who to be, I'm going to pick up the garbage that someone else left here. And they're not necessarily doing it because they want to or they think it's a good idea, but they know that, well, this person's, they, they reward picking up after others. They reward saying thank you and please. And I think that's where there's a line too, because people will take advantage of it and how to get the students and the teachers on the same level where the kids aren't taking advantage of the teachers and the teachers aren't, I don't know.
I have a question about your example, because I've seen this happen in, at least at Sarrar, where, you know, you get tickets and they go into a drum. And so in theory, right, the PBIS part of it would be the conversation that you have with the teacher who, when you did the thing that was modeling the behavior we're looking for. It's like, so you get the immediate reward of the teacher saying, hey, you did great, here's your ticket, right? But what happens then when that kid gets a ticket every month and he gets put in the bin and they never win? What is the counterweight to that? Are they then more discouraged in the end by the fact that they never get picked than they were encouraged by getting the ticket in the first place?
That's a good question. And that's, that's the kind of mindset that our principals are starting to look at more closely. So when we talk about maybe our acknowledgement systems, we're a little too tangible-heavy, that's what they're talking about. And what, and let me give a different example. There are schools out there that when they do PBIS, the tangibles, like the thing you get, is very low because the whole idea has been built on community and about relationships and team building. And that's where we're trying to build that up more across the district.
So I guess those are the kinds of things that I would like to see consistent, but I don't, I don't have the inside knowledge to say how you implement that.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what we're looking for.
So what?
We're, we're looking for the target. We're, we're looking for what?
A big part of it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what you said is, gives us direction to where we need to focus our energies. We will work on the pathway to get there, yeah.
Data to demonstrate the effectiveness of PBIS. What's that data going to look like?
Yeah, so thanks, Mr. Mickle. On both of these, they kind of were saying the same thing. So the, the two things there, are they basically saying the same thing? And is it just kind of looking at data to prove we're moving in the right direction? And if so, you know, what we want to know is what data is important to the board? Some of the examples we gave is, you know, TFI, Andy can explain that in a little bit. But, you know, we've, we've got some baseline data there. So Andy, why don't you explain kind of the data we're looking at right now? And you guys can see if that meets with what your, your target is or not.
So a couple of data points that are, I think, essential when you're starting off would be starting to look at major infractions, major referrals. Those would be referrals that go to like the principal because I need to talk to you because you did something pretty significant. You broke a violation, the student code of conduct. You would expect to start seeing those decline across the district. Another data point would be the surveys. We recently met as an administrative team, I think it was January, and spent some time talking about how to take a deeper dive into those surveys. An example would be that if you're getting a return on those surveys from students, for example, and it says, you know, it's indicating that they don't like school, what do you do with that? How do you drill down on that? How do you maybe pull some kids together and say, and have a good conversation about, what is it about school that could be more enjoyable for you? What are your obstacles at school? So going down that path a little bit as well.
Is, I know the PBIS focuses mainly on the positive, not punishment. Is there any kind of data on if the kids that are still having infractions are the ones that are also receiving the rewards or the recognition, the positive through PBIS? Are they just the same children that are having infractions but are also having positives with PBIS? Or are they totally different kids or mixed?
So, tell me if I missed the mark, okay? I'm going to just start to talk about the tiers. So there's three tiers. And we've talked about them before at board meetings, whether it's academics with Ames Web and going through our RTI model, and on the other side's behavior. And it starts with tier one, which is about 80% of the students. Tier two is about 15%, and then tier three. So PBIS includes support for all those tiers of students. So if you have students that are in the tier two, tier three, who are having more behavioral challenges, right? They're not responding to the tier one like you would like to see. You have other methods, you have other practices to help support those students. Is that sort of what you're saying? Am I, I feel like I'm missing it a little bit.
No, I think, if I can, what I hear Haley saying is, hey, if we're tracking data, we also track data on the consequences kids get. And can we correlate the consequences to the positives for a student to see if there's any correlation?
Yeah.
Just if it's like, if it's working, or if it's, yeah, there's a link anyway.
Positives and zero negatives.
Right.
Or five positives and two, and then it went down to zero, then we could say, hey, maybe this has an impact.
Right.
Or it's the same children that keep having the negatives versus, look, these, these children at the beginning of the year were having negative and positive, now they're not having negative.
No, some of our, thank you for the clarity. Some of our buildings do a great job with that. That data collection throughout the building of knowing, you know, that's kind of what we call minor and it's what we call major, you know? The minors, the, you know, we call it an error correction, you know? It doesn't require referral to the office or anything, but it's that, hey buddy, you know, what's going on here? And just kind of get them back on track, but we keep the data on that. And then that's where we can start to make the connections between how many of those cues does a student need? And then did they have any major referrals after that or along, along the way too?
I also think with dealing with behavior, you know, obviously having social workers involved and whatnot, teachers aren't necessarily educated in the psychology portion of it or the way to do that, that they, it could just be naive to the fact of what they're doing at a building level to maybe have someone that is actively tracking that at all times to, you know, maybe whether it's a counselor or whatnot, seeing like where are we having to disconnect? Where might we need to meet with students where it's not, they're looking for acknowledgement out in the real world? But hey, let's talk about this, let's have some one-on-one contact with them.
So something I hear you saying that resonates with me is that over the years, I don't think a lot of districts really focus professional development and support in the area of classroom management, student behavior. We do, but is it, is it always targeted and focused to what's practically happening in your classroom day-to-day? Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do with the trauma-informed support too. Doing the initial professional development. Now we're in the stage of saying, okay, how do we work with teachers on a regular basis outside of just these big professional development days? How do, how can they bring a problem of practice from their classroom, their teams, to some experts? Like one of our therapists or a social worker, bring that problem of practice, and then they can walk away with some real solutions to try, and then we can follow up with them too.
So how can they do that?
That's what we're working on. So one, some examples would be, you know, we're starting at the middle school, and we're just the beginning phases with that. And so Carrie Jankar and I have met with Jessica Boytum there to say, where are some entry points for us to come in? Starting off small, you know, we don't want to take on too much at once, but we want to say, you know, where can we start getting feedback from teachers? And so the first is to go to her professional, or I'm sorry, her building leadership team and ask them as leaders in the building, how do you want to see this happen in the building? Where we can support you and what's going on with students? And then what's a good way for us to get the information from you, where you need the support? And then where you're going to feel good about walking away, be like, you got supported. So that's, that's kind of where we're going right now, actually this month.
Is that localized to tier two and tier three? Or is that the entire, all three tiers?
That's a good question. I think what's on our mind mostly is probably not tier one as much as, what are your, I guess for me it's, hey, teachers, what are your stress points? You know, what students are you struggling with consistently? Because, you know, with student behavior, it's, it's usually a small number of students that are having the increased challenges day-to-day, that take a lot of energy and support. But is that energy and support getting us progress? Or are we just kind of repeating the cycle over and over? And we, that's not what we want with our teachers. We want to be able to support them so they feel like they're making progress with students.
Is it a misunderstanding that tier one PBIS is for everyone? And everyone should receive, student, at a student level, should receive some kind of PBIS at that tier one? And then that tier two and tier three are when you have specific issues that you need to address with particular students?
Yeah, I would say that's correct.
So besides a reduction in penalties, you know, detentions, things like that, is it a fair data point that tier two and tier three, the better we do this, the fewer and shorter the time is that there, that, and number of students that need tier two and tier three interventions?
Yeah, I would say that some of that's, some of that's very true. So, and what, let me try to explain that. So you would, a lot of our buildings, if not all of them, probably I think all of them, are on the tier two roadmap this year. They have a tier two team, they meet, they have identified students, they have a plan to help support those students. It's usually through some sort of small group environment. You would hope to see that progress there. So if you have a group of tier two students and you're meeting with them and supporting them and teaching them the skills they need, you would expect to see their, you know, referrals go down, their minor, their minor reminders to go down. So that does make perfect sense. The only caveat for me would be that tier three behaviors does also involve students with disabilities sometimes, where you still want to see an improvement, but it's maybe through a different pathway than, than the tier, tier one and tier two.
But either way, is it a valid data point that we should track the number of tier two and tier three and we should see them go down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I bet it.
Okay. Again, I don't think anyone, anyone is against the, the concept or what have you. This is a lot of energy, this is a lot of commitment, this is a lot of resource. At the end of the day, the goal is to, is to improve climate. If it's not working, we need to be able to just, you know, I don't want to be, when was the reboot? We started this in 2003.
Twenty-one.
I'm sorry?
2021.
But we started it in 2013.
Yes.
And now we're doing a reboot in 2021. I don't want to be in 2029 saying it's time for a reboot. I want to be able to say, either it's working or we need to figure out, is it time to stop or is it time to figure out what's wrong with our application?
Yeah, no, I'm on the same page with you. And 2029 is way too far away, I want to know sooner than that, so.
I don't think we can't, isn't it a law? I mean, don't we have to have some kind of PBIS?
Yes, board policy and law.
We have to have PBIS. How we do it is up to us.
Right, it's not.
All the, all the law says is we have to come up with a framework and track data. It's up to us to decide that framework and what data we're tracking. And so it behooves us to say, if it's not working, we need to look at our framework.
I have a couple comments, questions. One, I want to go back to the consistency part for a minute across the school buildings. I know it's maybe a small change, but I think it would be helpful for everyone outside the building specifically. Can we use the same language? So for example, today when we were talking to Mr. Gurka, he's like, yep, here at Sarrar, we call it PBIS. The elementary calls it pride, the middle school calls it, it's all over the place. Can we get one, like, and, and the terms that we use when we're talking about PBIS, can they be consistent? So when a kid makes a transition from a preschool building to an elementary building or an elementary, et cetera, the language is already embedded. Something, because we have, a lot of it's already there with the, whatever. Is it our pride words? Can we just have some, keep, keep improving the consistency of the language? Some of it's already there.
Yeah, but I thought, I'm sorry.
I didn't think pride and PBIS were the same.
But some of them use pride as part of their PBIS language. So I think this is what I'm talking about, like, can we get this, these kinks worked out?
But we, we discussed this previously and said we were going to allow individual schools to figure out what works best for them. And that's the pride issue. Some of the school districts said pride works really well for them, can we keep it? And some of the schools said it's, it's not.
Well, how they implement it, fine, but can we just use the same language? I guess that's what I'm asking, because I'm, again, I'm confused talking about it. If we've got pride over here and it's these, and sometimes we call it PBIS as pride, then it's all.
Well, pride, pride is the acronym for the Behavioral Expectations under PBIS. So I think to what, what your point was, is that they're kind of different terms for different purposes.
Yeah, that's what I, I didn't know they were.
Right, so most of our buildings use pride. The preschool uses something else because developmentally pride's just too long, okay? And then the high school has branded strong, which I support. I think it's worked out great there. So that's kind of where we're at with the acronym. But, you know, I think overall though, our, our teams in the buildings, they're using consistent language with the process. And I will remind the board that every building has a link on the website for parents. If you go under student life for every building, there's a PBIS link. I've recently asked the principals, hey, go revisit this link and make sure it's still accurate to what you're doing in the building, because you put it up a while ago. But at the same time, the resource is there.
So I guess the follow-up question to that, because when I did that and I read every building, they were all over the place too. Some had a ton of information, some had two sentences. Is that something that I can say, hey, can we make sure these are all consistent?
That, yeah, that's on the next page with the website.
All right, then I want to jump forward again to the, the, how do we track PBIS? I like some of the suggestions that came out today, because I have a significant concern about whether it's even possible to track this. And here's an example as to why. This year, we implemented a new behavior policy at the middle school, correct? Beginning of school year?
Correct, yeah.
The, the consequences changed, there's, right?
Correct.
The data from last year is no longer valid from this year. If you change the system, the data is no longer relevant. So if moving forward, we make another change to how we implement behavior and/or it's implemented inconsistently in the classrooms or among pods, that data is not helpful in any way. And I don't know how you get around that, because you have to make changes and adjustments as you go, right?
Yeah.
And, and people are, are people, so they're going to implement things differently. So that, for me, makes it a very, a moot data point. I don't think it helps us a whole lot. So I like some of these other ideas, but again, are there the same variables? Is there something we can keep consistent enough to know that this is the part that's moving? And I don't know, I don't know.
Expulsions, suspensions?
But that, but we've changed the rules of how we give those. And so if we keep changing the rules of how we give those, the PBIS is not going, that's not a good tracking point. And we have changed the rules on how we give those.
I just, and I don't disagree, I just think it's the best tool we have.
Well, you gave, you guys gave some good ones. Haley gave a good one about how is it the same person, is the same person getting a positive reward and also getting a detention? And you gave one about are people moving out of the tiers? I feel like those might be more easy to track and valid than, let's say, the, and the behavior one's the hardest to track. It's, I think it's the largest, the numbers are huge right now.
But is it fair, like, in the tier three section, I'm assuming tier three would be some kids that have quite a bit of psychological, emotional, that's just my view of it. I, I don't know for a fact, I'm asking you.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is that, is that really fair? But what I'm saying is that, is that really fair to kind of compare that then to someone who's like in tier one, who shouldn't have those issues? So like, I think it would be really helpful, because I think when PBIS years ago was like, it was supposed to be for those kids. Now we've just kind of thrown it on everybody. But I think it would be really, at least for me, because I worry about the kids in tier three, I would like to know, like, how many are there? Is this helping them? You know, the 80% that are out there that get in trouble here and there and everywhere, okay. You know, those kids are going to be okay. The tier three kids, even the tier two kids, I don't know how you determine that. I, I don't know. But I, for me, I would like to know, like, how many are there at the middle school? How many are in tier three? What are we doing for them? And how do we judge? Because that is going to be the real judgment on how this stuff is working. Those kids, that are the ones that need the help the most. Not all the other kids that don't need this, this stuff. That, that's my opinion.
Going off of that, are the positives that tier three are doing, are they positive for being in tier three? Or are they comparable to the positives that tier two and tier one are doing? Like, is it like you're, you're demonstrating good behavior for you? Or you're demonstrating good behavior that I would be impressed with tier one doing as well?
Yeah, tier three looks a little bit more like, in the tier fidelity, fidelity inventory, the TFI, you have to have, you have like a FBA, Functional Behavior Analysis. You have a behavior intervention plan. You have those things in place that are very scripted out for replacing behaviors and teaching new behaviors to students. Well, I think one thing I'd like us to do as a group is to make sure that we know what each building is kind of doing through the, through the district. The reason I say that is because many of our buildings are doing awesome PBIS things. And I think sometimes we're putting one building experience and, and using that as maybe the criteria for how it's going. And, and I want to make sure we're being fair across the board.
Not having a child in the district, do people who are tier two or tier three know they are tier two or tier, tier three? And are their parents aware of when they graduate out of a tier, like in real time?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know what you mean.
So Andy, in order to do that, for each of us to, you know, kind of see what each, going to the website, I, I'll go home and I'll start there. How else can we make sure that we're?
Yeah, it's a good question. Like, so, I mean, to be put on the spot, I mean, I'm open to meeting. I'm open to going to the building, talking to the principal, who's usually the leader of that tier one charge, that tier two charge. I think that would be a helpful experience if possible, if the time allows.
Can we bring them here and have them talk about it? I'm just trying to think of practicality, like Lauren and I already did building tours last week to look at building space. Now we're going to go back and do it for this. Like, I, I feel that, that's a little cumbersome and outside of our scope.
Well, now, now I'm on the hook because the principals have to come to a board meeting and I'm going to get blamed for it.
I want to go to the school that I can get the coin and get a vending machine.
That's Whitney.
It's Whitney.
Whitney has a really cute.
Can we do the?
Maraski has a video and they record it.
Can we, you'd have to bring that to us.
One, another idea could be that we could have our ESC consultants come to a board meeting and talk to you about the coaching and support they've been providing. Each one has their own building and they can kind of share with you the, the story of where they've been the past two years and then currently where they're at right now. That might be a good exercise for us to go through.
I think this, this goes back to kind of the original question. I, I think the board has to get clarity on the outcomes that you're looking for, for this work and what's important to you right now. This is a multi, it's been a multi-year work, right? It's going to continue to, to go on. So I, I just want to be thoughtful of not creating experiences just because those experiences think they're going to get us to where we want to go? Because I can have all eight principals kind of tell you what's going on in PBIS and we're not any further down the road in answering the questions that you may have. So that's the part of, you know, as we think about this and we think about, okay, what are strategies that we think are important right now that we want to at least get some more information on and get clarity on? You know, in terms of the data that, that we think effectively measures what we're doing, I just don't know if having principals, visiting buildings, having principals come is really going to answer the questions that are on your mind. I'm, I'm not against it, but I don't know if it gets.
I think I floated that idea, I apologize.
Figure out how, if we don't know what's going on, how are we supposed to give you an answer of what we want?
I guess rather than sitting and watching it, we should be asking counselors, administrators, is there any murky water in your PBIS that you feel that you need clarification on or that your teachers do? What are the positives you're seeing? What are the negatives you're seeing? Is it working the way it's being implemented in your building? Do you want help on how to implement it in the way it's intended to be? I mean, that might be the better.
Yeah, and just going back to my point is that I'm just looking for a way where we can get a holistic picture of how it's going and make sure that we're not looking at maybe, you know, small pockets or maybe where it's not going well.
I think the best way to do that is survey the teachers. You're not in the room, none of us are in the classrooms. We don't know what they're experiencing. I wouldn't even attempt to speak for them. But they deserve a voice. I mean, maybe they could shed light on things that they don't like or they see that could be, I don't know. I don't know how you guys do all your meetings and everything.
Yeah, so I think that's one thing that, so let's go down that train of thought of a survey, right? So we do surveys of our staff through PBIS, then they're anonymous. And so there, there are surveys that are there that, I don't know if they ask directly of, what do you think about PBIS? But there's surveys of different things. And then, you know, the, the work that's being done at the building is led by a teacher, a teacher committee. So, you know, again, as you take a look at any large, any organizations, small or large, you're going to have people, any idea that love it, that don't like it, right? So, you know, I, I think we could take a look at what current structures do we have in place? How are we getting feedback through the surveys that we're already doing? How are we getting feedback through the committee work that's there? I, I will say, in, in terms of my work with the principals, in terms of talking about what's on their plate, you know, one of the things that came up with PBIS was just talking about the recognition system. But nobody said, recognize, let me clarify because we've talked about recognition systems. The, the statewide recognition system, the bronze, silver award they brought, we've talked about that. But in terms of just the day-to-day work, that's not been something that's come up that's, that they felt like is not meaningful or helpful to the building. So if I could, because I know it's getting late, we got a couple other times, and I want to cut the conversation short, but there's a couple other things that we need direction on if I can move on. One of the things that we talked about is this middle column, or one of the things the, the board gave feedback on is, hey, a target that we want to reach is a social worker, staffing levels with social workers so that they can be active in tier one. We just want to, so we, we're doing the master staffing work, we'll have that for the board here shortly. Social workers are not really geared towards focusing on tier one. So Andy, give a little bit of context. It's more towards school counselors that work with two to one. So if you want to give a little preview of what our.
I would just say that the, I think the initial idea of having social workers was around the idea of really helping with those tier two and tier three needs. With that said, we do have an awesome social worker who does tier one support. So, but she just does it to support the school counselors. You know, so, you know, we need to really support our tier one through, I believe, integration in the classroom, through trauma-informed professional development, through social emotional learning. That's where you need the integration. But, you know, in terms of staffing for social workers to support tier one, I'm, I'm okay with them supporting tier one. I just, I just don't know if that was the original intent.
So does the question need to change in that, do we need more guidance or?
Yeah, so that's what I just wanted to clarify is when we do the master staffing plan, we're looking at all the tiers holistically in terms of that support. But we're saying kind of how we're structured and kind of framed it, even though social workers do some tier one, that would be school counselors, so let's take a look at that. And then look at when we have tier two and three, do we have enough social workers to support tier two and three? Does that make sense? The last two things, and George, if you scroll to the second page real quick. The, and this is just kind of, we put on the second phase, so it's not pressing, but just a couple clarifying points. It said, we wanted to have an updated website with this information to increase resources available on the web that are also searchable. Dan and I have worked together, he's done a variety of surveys on use of the website. And here's what we found out consistently. People don't go to our website unless they need something specifically. You know, I need to find the calendar, I need to find this, I need to do enrollment. So we've got stuff that is on the website. But I just would like the board to start thinking about how robust and how much energy we want to put in this because it tends to be our website is for, I need this information, I need this, or I'm, it, and we haven't seen that much traffic towards a website for this purpose, but it's something we can consider.
I would suggest, again, using tier one, tier two, three. Tier one is just good information, the same way it's good for all the students. It's probably good information for parents. It would be helpful at a tier one level to turn PBIS into a different kind of four-letter word. And I, I still think anecdotally we suffer from that. I think a lot of people think, think PBIS is a waste of time, it's this, it's that, or what have you. So I think just some basic information that's universal. But if you are a parent and your student is in a situation where they're experiencing or needing, however we're going to phrase that politely, tier two or tier three intervention, then you really want good information and you want it quickly and easily. And sometimes, you know, just like, just like students sometimes are embarrassed to ask questions, I'm sure parents, it's a little uncomfortable to ask these questions and they would love to get some concrete resources from a website or, or what have you so that they then know how to, you know, how to phrase the uncomfortable questions, whether it's with the teacher or the guidance counselor or whatever. But I do, you know, I, it resonates that nobody, you know, nobody needs this information until you need it.
Yeah.
And then when you need it, you want it really bad and you get frustrated when it's not there. And I think that's the only thing I would counter that we need to think about. And then we need to have it consistent at all of our schools. Does that resonate or no?
Yeah. The last thing was the have staffing mindfully to support the needs of our kids without a waiting list. We don't know of any waiting lists we've ever had for mindfully. And so the waiting sometimes may be for insurance, because this is not through the school district, it's through insurance. So if you have specific instances, talk to Jenny. She works with mindfully to support when we have more kids that have needs, we get more counselors. So we talked and just wanted to clarify that we haven't had any knowledge of a waiting list. So Jenny, if you want to.
I was just going to share that, you know, we, we also work with Family First Solutions. We have two companies now that we work with. And Family First Solutions has added an additional therapist now to cover caseload. And then mindfully just emailed me, you know, yesterday saying that they, well, a couple weeks ago and then yesterday, the person's starting, that they're having an additional one to support the needs, I think at Maraski and Kinsner, I believe. So they're, you know, they go based on our demand. So if there are waiting lists, yes, I'd like to know about that if somebody can't get in. But typically, I asked the question last time to the mindfully rep and she said there are no waiting lists, it was just waiting on paperwork from parents to get their insurance going, so. And if they don't have the insurance, then we work with them on that.
So just let us know if you hear anything.
So those are listed on the website, like.
Mindfully's not, that's what I'm looking at right now.
You know, what I would say is typically when, I mean, we can put it on the website, that's fine. But typically the counselors are working with the students that need it. And that they get communicated that way. Or the build, the teacher recommends it, the building principal recommends it, the counselor or the social worker to get them hooked up with services. So that's pretty much how we've been working it since.
So Ms. McCall, I think this gives us good direction for tonight to, to move forward and target, if you're okay. I'm good.
I'm good. Is everyone else good?
Thank you, Andy. The last thing we wanted to bring to your attention, and I'm going to turn it over to Jenny, is to give an update on, on where we're at with substitute teacher rates and researches, research and some considerations moving forward.
All right, so I know it's late, so I'll, I'll kind of go quickly through this and I'll let you know specifically what I would like, you know, you to consider. And then we can look at timelines of when I would need an answer. So just again, the first chart here is just some comparables that my staff put together in terms of what are the current rates for substitutes? And, you know, just a point of an article that was sent to me and shared with me, back in 2021, we may have had in the state of Ohio, 16,000 substitutes available. Currently, there's about 5,000. And, and that's just a statistic that was shared in an article. And so what's hap.
Jenny, I didn't hear you. Can you say that again?
Are you serious?
I am.
So in 2021, according to the Department of Labor Statistics, there were, in Ohio, there were 16,000 available substitutes.
I think Jenny, in 2018, it was 16.
Oh, I, I looked at it.
Oh, I thought it was in 2021, it was five.
Anyway, right now, there's 5,000 is what they're saying, available. And so.
I didn't hear you, Jenny. Can you say that again?
So, you know, the result is we're all competing, all these districts, you know, around us, we're all competing for the same people. And so what happens is, you know, everybody tries to outdo each other and raise their rates and try to attract more. And so again, everybody's kind of putting in some different things. We've done it too. We've put in permanent district subs, you know, you've afforded us that. We've played with how many days, you know, we have sub, sub, subbing for us. So everybody's trying different things, but we're, the reality is we're fighting for the, you know, the same people. So it is what it is, but what we have to do is kind of consider where we are in this. And as you can see, Strongsville right now is, is the lowest at 108.
Is North Royalton 105? Or am I looking?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry. We're not the lowest, or I just at the bottom there.
Not helping you, okay.
That's okay. Us in North Royalton are struggling, no. Um, so.
Medina's 100, yeah.
There you go, okay. So we're not the lowest, but we're toward the bottom.
But we're at the bottom, okay, go ahead.
All right. So the next piece there underneath, George, if you can scroll up a little bit. This is just our current rates, where we, we are, just to remind you, anchor you in what we're paying. So 108 daily. We look at if they get, if they're with us for 31-plus days, we bump it up to 118. Doesn't have to be consecutive days and then our permanent subpay. So the one thing that I would request now is to say for the remainder of this year, if we could bump it up to 118 as a daily sub rate. And what I'm thinking is it's, it's more in line with the average that's at the bottom there in the gray of 120. And the reality of our subs starting now, I think I counted, I think we have like 44 more days left. So, you know, as we look at that, you know, the chances of them even getting to 31 are slim to none. So that would be one thing that I would request for the remainder of this year, just to get us through. Because as we go day by day, it's just a struggle and I, I feel like in the spring it just gets worse. So that is one consideration that I would ask. And then the next part, George, if you can just scroll up, it's just really our current state. So it's just there for you. You know, we have 60 certified subs. In the past, we've had upwards to 80 or 90 available. So that's a struggle. And then, you know, again, we've had that many absences when I put this data together. Some were filled by our district permanent subs. So you can just see that we are using our permanent subs on a daily basis. What the struggle is, we have so many FMLA leaves, and I think I have that down there. You know, we're, we're just keep climbing with FMLA. And so our district subs are familiar with our district, they know the buildings, they're, you know, licensed teachers. So oftentimes they say, hey, I don't want to be a district sub anymore. I'll go for the, you know, position where I can be in the classroom every day. So that's been a struggle. Our fill rates have dropped, you know, they used to be between 89 and 92, and now we're looking at 79. In this quarter, 75%. So again, like I mentioned, FMLA is an impact. These apps now that, that subs have access to in terms of, I can have one app where I can see what's open in Rocky River, what's open in Barrio, and I can like pick then, well, I'm going to go here because Strongsville pays less. So that's been a little bit of a struggle. Professional development, you know, as we, we've heard, our focus is on our letters training. We've had to look at half-days now for that, drop it to six teachers going through it instead of 12 like we've had in the past. And that is a, you know, board priority as well as mine. And so that's just been a struggle. And again, we just have a smaller sub pool. So kind of just moving forward, what I've listed here, if we don't do anything different than we are this year, I put the new rates in there for 24, 25, so you can kind of see. where we would still be at for that if we stayed the same. And then, just something for consideration, if, George, if you could just scroll up again, you know, as an ideal state, moving into next year, and we don't have to decide this now, you know, I can bring this back to another meeting later, but just something that I most likely will be coming back to is really adjusting our rates possibly for next year. And, you know, I've listed for you just some, some recommendations as well. You know, we'd be more an average with what everybody else is paying for the most part. Permanent subs, you know, they go into that long-term assignment, so I know the board has approved 11, looking at possibly 15, just to get us through, especially at the elementary levels where we're struggling the most. What we found is when, you know, that, that 15, or that 30-day mark isn't really having the impact that we thought it would, with getting people to stay with us, but what is problematic is when teachers take, substitutes take a long-term position, you know, typically teachers will leave lesson plans for two weeks, but then after that, they're on their own. They're planning, they're grading, they're doing all of the work that a teacher would do. And so, instead of, you know, having them be at that 118 for 60 days until they get there, bumping that up to more in line with like a 164 is what I have there as a recommendation. So, the only other thing I would really mention is that intervention specialists are really difficult to find. I mean, this is, if you recall, this was the first year, we started the year not fully staffed, and I was missing an intervention specialist. So, then on top of that, to find substitutes in that area that are qualified, where we have to give legally, you know, specially-designed instruction and legally-complete documents, that's been a real struggle. And so, thinking of a way to carve them out for substitutes, and, you know, you know, working with kids and coming in cold and knowing, Andy mentioned, behavior plans and all of these specificities that go along with those services, I think is, is a need, so I would be considering that as well. So, again, I just wanted to kind of start the conversation and bring that up, but in terms of the ideal state, we can revisit that, you know, another time, but what I really would like direction on is, is, George, if you could go back up, is that moving to 118, at least for the remainder of this year? And I can bring it back to the next March meeting for a decision, if you'd like to, but that's where we are.
I don't think that that's unreasonable, seeing as that our neighbors to the north of us have 120, and then we've got Brunswick at 120 as well, so I mean, just right over the, right over the border, they could get more for, that's, I think, 118 is.
If you do that, can you keep data of, did our fill rate improve? And do you think that would be legitimate data?
Yeah.
It would be?
Yeah, I mean, I can. There's, you know, again, it's, this is, this is always a moving target, there's lots of variables, like, you know, over the winter, we had the flu hit, you know, so substitutes also get sick, so that's a struggle. But we, you know, anecdotally, we've brought in a couple new ones, and they have said, you know, "Wow, you pay really low, you know, I'm not sure that I want to be here for that." And so, but, you know, at the same time, we do have very loyal subs, because our district's a great district, and people want to come here, and they're comfortable here. So, that's what's kind of been keeping us afloat, I think. But in all fairness, these people are working really hard to cover absences each and every day, and, you know, I just feel like, if, I'm just very concerned toward the end of the year, because attendance just gets worse as, as the year goes on with staff, and the weather gets nice, and people are using personal days for, you know, valid reasons for events for their own children and things like that, so...
We don't use the same staffing as Brunswick and Berea for subs, do we? Because they used to do that ESC, the, do we use that, or no?
Yeah, I don't know specifically what they use, but some have, some contracted out and pay a company to get...
Right, and that's what they do.
Yeah. No, we don't, we don't do that.
Because then they're part of that app where you can see them, so that you can see them, you can see, Parma's on there as well. So, when it comes to someone maybe that's brand-new looking to get into it, that would be more incentive for them to get on board with Strongsville in the beginning, because they go their one-stop shop of, "Oh, Brunswick's on here, Berea's on here."
Yeah.
When does it become critical?
I would say it's pretty critical right now.
Can we start it after the Easter break, or do you need to start it sooner?
I mean, again, we're, we're getting by, you know, I mean, some days are worse than others. Mondays and Fridays are not great, you know. What we're sacrificing is having to cancel letters training right now. We, you know, we had a wellness meeting today, and we couldn't bring everybody together for that. You know, and then, you know, we never leave an elementary class uncovered, but what we're sacrificing is, okay, we may not sub the gifted teacher, we have to sub the classroom teacher, and the gifted teacher is just as important, you know, and so, I think that's where we're, we're kind of shifting people around, so we're making it work, but I think if you asked our teachers, they would say it's very critical, so...
So, is it critical you needed it at the next board meeting, or is it critical you needed it after the Easter break?
I think, in fairness to all of you, as I'm presenting this today, I could wait till March, which then it would start after break. We can get by a couple more weeks.
You know, you and I talked about this, my concern is, is, you know, unless we make it $500 a day, we're not actually going to do anything.
Yeah.
But it's a decent experiment, it's a short enough time, we can try it. Can we make signs and plant them in Medina? New rate, 100, et cetera, and we can plant them in Medina. And I know somebody who can drop them off. I know somebody who can conveniently do the planting for us. So, but again, this is, this is not a problem unique to...
No.
Schools, this is a problem unique to everybody.
But $50 a week is substantial, especially if you were to do that times four, 200 bucks a month extra, that would make or break whether you decided to go to Berea or Strongsville. I would, I would choose Berea or Brunswick over that.
Well, the other thing I was going to say is, we need, and we've talked about it, we need to think about ways to attack this problem by addressing the need, the great need for substitutes. So, if there's things we can change to help us not have a need for substitutes, we should consider that, whether it's a carrot or a stick, but we still should consider those kinds of things.
That's a good point. I mean, this is, this is considering our certificated staff, we're equally having, you know, if you recall, last year, we did up the rates for our non-certificated staff, but again, we're still struggling there as well. And, I mean, thank goodness we upped the rates, because I think we're getting more, but again, it's just a continual challenge.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Okay, with that, I just have a couple routine items under curriculum. Both of these are for statewide or district competitions for athletics that are after the fact. So, under curriculum, number one is be resolved upon my recommendation that permission be granted for the Strongsville High School swim team to travel to Canton to participate in state meet, which was held on February 22nd to the 23rd. Transportation was provided by district van, and expenses were paid by the athletic boosters. And the second was be resolved upon my recommendation that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School wrestling team, who traveled to Perrysburg to participate in the OHSAA District Wrestling Tournament that took place March 1st to the 2nd. Transportation was provided via school bus, and expenses were paid by the athletic department budget. And with that, that concludes curriculum and my report.
Any follow-up questions or closing questions for Cameron?
Just a correction. It's, you state, you stated athletic boosters for the...
Oh, it's athletic department budget, yeah. Thanks, George.
Yep.
I do love this. Where are we at? Next on our agenda is the adoption of the consent calendar. Motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented and/or amended. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type action consent, which constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane, any discussion? Hearing none. George, take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We then return to Treasurer's Report. Mr. Onagnostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have five items for your consideration. Although these five items say discussion, they're actually action, I just had to manipulate the agenda. What these are is five tax complaints that we're initiating. This is the second year we're bringing it to the board, and the reason for that is there was legislation change, which went into effect last, last year, where we've always filed with our attorney, David Seed, but now before we do, we have to have him order approved, and also thresholds changed. And what those thresholds are is, has to be prior, sale prior to January 1st of 2023, the sale price has to be 10% greater than the county valuation, plus an additional $500,000. So, these five properties listed all meet that criteria, and the complaint is, is getting their values based on the recent sales in 2022, and the complaint is to bring their county value up to the sale price. David is recommending for those, and based on the legislative change, they can be approved on their own consent agenda, but they have to be different than other items from the, from other board items, that's why they're separate. So, I have these, for board docs, we can only have one consent calendar based on its system, so the way I manipulated it was made it a, these five items as a discussion, then an item N is a second consent calendar to approve those items. So, just going through each one, M1, resolution approving filing of complaint against real property, Treeview Cleveland LLC. Item M2, resolution approving file complaint against the real property, Ramani Holdings and Joam Reality. Item M.3, resolution approving filing of complaint against real property, 17090 Royalton LLC. M.4, resolution approving filing complaint against real property, Strong Property Ventures LLC. And M.5, resolution approving file complaint against real property, the Michael W. Van Devoe Revocable Trust, UAD, March 30th, 2015. And then moving on to item N, Consent Calendar 2. Motion to adopt the Consent Calendar 2 for tax complaints in items, make it, items M, M1 to M5, I think the order changed.
Are you going to change it now?
Yeah, I'm going to change it now, before we do that.
Looks good to me, George.
What's that?
It looks good to me.
Yeah.
I just updated.
So, we're on item N1 with the motion.
Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar 2 Tax Complaints at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in the Treasurer's Report slash Tax Complaints, items M1 through M5, which constitute the Consent Calendar 2, are adopted in one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane, any discussion? I will share for the board that property taxes is something that's in everybody's current events right now. These are called complaints, which, which might be fair, fair jargon or fair naming of it, but in essence, what happened was, all five of these properties were recently sold. Prior to that sale, the county, county treasurer had a value assigned to them. When those properties were sold, they were sold at a much higher property value, a threshold of 10% plus half a million dollars. So, whatever they were valued at prior, they sold for 10% more plus half a million dollars. And so, it is the district's position that that kind of change, it is only correct and fair and proper that the district asks the county to adjust the property value to that, to match the recent sale value. Not because we're being greedy or want to punish those owners, but because the way property taxes work, everyone should pay their fair share, as close as we can determine it, and selling your property is a really good way to figure out what the value of your property is, so that's what the purpose is. Personally, the change in the law just means we have to bring this information to the public's attention in a board meeting, and I generally subscribe to the idea that that's a good thing. I've said enough, does anyone else have anything else to add? George, take the roll.
Before I do that, I'll add one more thing. So, the filing date with the county is in, by the end of March, and just as we file, other property owners have the ability to file as well by the March 31st deadline. So, once I, then we get a report of who's filed to lower their value, so I'll share that with the board as well.
Thank you, George.
So, Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Board of Education Other. Do we have any Board of Education Others?
Not anymore. That's the spirit.
So, I will, I do have one, and I will be as quick as possible. March 19th is Election Day. Polls are open from, is it 5:00 AM?
No.
No.
We'll have a talk with whoever wrote this. Polls are open from 6:30 AM until 7:00 PM. I do know they close at 7:00 PM. The following locations of our schools are used for election purposes. All of those locations will have signs posted for where the public can enter the building and where possible designated parking areas. So, Strongsville High School is a polling location, you, the voting area is by the media center, and you enter the media center door. Strongsville Middle School is a polling location. Polling is in the auditorium, so when you enter in, you'll want to go to the left. Chapman is a polling location. Parking will be on the side of the building for voters. However, the front will also be used in case the side lot is filled. Voting takes place in the multipurpose room. Kinsner, parking is in the back lot for the voting public, and you enter the gymnasium through door K. Sarar, parking will be on the blacktop area near the black, near the basketball hoops. Voting is in the multipurpose room, and you use the main entrance. Whitney, parking will be on the front and side lots, the voting location in the multipurpose room or the cafeteria. Public are to use the main entrance when accessing the voting area. And finally, the administrative office here, parking is in the front lot for the voting public, and the voting location is in this room, right here now, and you can use the main entrance. And the reason I list all of that and spend the time on it is because school will be in session. So, if you do choose to vote on Election Day, and I hope you do, if you haven't already voted, please add in a little extra time if necessary, especially when school is starting and when school is leaving. There's going to be buses, there's going to be parents, there's going to be children. So, we do, I also want to let everyone in the public know that the city of Strongsville has helped, is helping us with that, and there will be police officers at all locations, not because we don't want anyone exercising their vote, but because we want to make sure it's safe for the voters and for our students. And then ultimately, we do have issue 25, a renewal. It is a no-tax increase renewal. It represents approximately 10% of our... It represents approximately 10% of our current revenue. We have spent a lot of time giving everyone in the community the factual information they need to make a wise and informed vote. And so on behalf of the school board, on behalf of the administration and on behalf of the entire district, I ask you to vote. Please vote your conscience and we'll talk about it at our next board meeting. That's all I had for Board of Education Other. If I don't hear any other others, we do have need for executive session on the topic of...
To consider the employment or discipline of a public employee and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or state statutes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 10:15 PM. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention. And again, Tuesday's Voting Day. Don't forget to vote.